First moment.
Technology.
Yeah, continue. Okay, so um this is your chance to comment on any item that's on the agenda. We'll have a second citizens to be heard around six o'clock. Um but this might be a short meeting, so I'm probably better to, you know, I recommend not waiting till six. Um we'll start with people in the chambers and we've got two volunteers who have just stepped up. So um please go ahead and we usually keep comments to about three minutes.
Um so first of all, I'm terrified of public speaking, but I'm trying to get better at it. Uh my name is Danat. I am with the Monfrie Health Bank. I'm the board chair and this is Kate, our development director, expert in air with capital E. Um we just wanted to come and thank you for awarding us the Star Business Grants, the amount of hundred thousand dollars. Almost a year ago, we purchased the old USU campus and since then, we have been working tirelessly on renovations, planning, partnerships, et cetera. Um along with continuing to serve well over fifteen percent of the Grand County population at the free clinic. Um our partners in the West Building include, I can't remember the big case. They're numerous. Um we have sixteen partner organizations. We have Arches Education Center. Um I'm just gonna list a couple because sixteen is a very long list, so people get tired after about eight. So so Arches Education Center, um the Green County Public Library Team Center, Moab Area Community Land Trust, um Active Reentry, Renter of Restoration, um Boab Science, um the list goes onwards, but a lot of these organizations couldn't find a place in Moab before um because of expense or even just the availability. Um and now they have a place to collaborate and um help more people buy the services they need. Um and we are working on daycare and housing for the other areas on our campus. Stay tuned for that. Um we had our grand opening last month, which came in conjunction with our fifteenth birthday. It was a huge success uh with the help of Bob and Marjorie Reed, some local artists. We have a wonderful community mural along the west side of the West Building. Um if you want to ever wander around and take a look. Um and if you're unable to attend the opening, um reach out to myself, Kate, or Doug, our director, and we'd be happy to give you a personal tour. I know Stephen was there that one, so um thank you.
Thank you.
It's great. Thank you.
Uh anyone else in the chambers want to comment, citizens, spirits?
Yeah, everyone. Um first of all, thank you for the Star Grants. I hope that that's something that gets picked up again in the future.
And and be sure the mic is just for you. Yeah, thank you.
Um because I've gotten to see firsthand that space and it's really incredible what it's done for this community. So thank you for that in the past and a little bit in the future. Um but of course, I'm here to talk to you about the HGHO. I stand before this body once again to tell you that the HGHO needs to be adjusted in order to meet our goals of building a thriving community of repeat flats. Those of you who have been a part of the ordinance currently qualified, Kevin, Mary, and Evan, look closely at your work. Has it resulted in the outcomes you you intended? This is your chance to reflect on your successes and remedy the failures. Those of you who are newer to this ordinance as commissioners, Mike, Tricia, Bill, and Chuck, who's not here, read the ordinance and the rules and regulations carefully and with a discerning eye. More importantly, read the input of your constituents that are directly affected by its words. I'm not asking you to make a decision on the scope of the revisions today, but I am pleading with you to agree to workshop it. And this time around, you must include the people who are directly affected by this overlay instead of limiting the conversation to governmental representatives who are peripherally involved. Speak and truly consider the input of the developers, real estate agents, contractors, and lenders who have chosen to bring it to life. Speak to the community members and business owners who are ultimately affected by it as future owners and tenants. There are those that call the density of HGHO projects a gift. It is not in the least. Building housing in Grand County is a responsibility. One that has often felt thankless and frustrating, fraught with never-ending hurdles. I'm doing my best to do my part in spite of all of that. Now do your part. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers have comments? Does anyone on Zoom have any comments for citizens to hear? You can press the raise your hand icon or we used to say they could unmute themselves. I don't know if they can anymore. Okay, okay. Okay. Okay, so uh moving on, um so we have presentations and we have three measure and making sorry, anyway, come on, come on, come on up and um.
I didn't even hear that last from back there. So I hope you can hear me now. Am I loud enough?
Um loud loud enough for me, but um and if you're if you talked or if you point the microphone at you while you're talking, you'll be loud enough to on light on this as well.
All right, great. Uh I'm Sheri Major and this is Ken Sherwood. We're both on the Council for Aging that just got started again after the COVID recess. So we set out some goals for uh the Grand Center. And one of our goals was to um put in uh electric charging uh stations at the Grand Center. So I started looking for grants and found this one called the Workplace Electrical Vehicle Charging Funding Assistance Program. And I was very excited about it. I called Rocky Mountain Power and they gave me a list of places to go to look for grants. And this um grant was actually, as you can see from the paper, I'm assuming you all got this in your packet, that in two thousand nineteen, the state legislature started this grant with about five million dollars. Well, it's only one point six has been used so far and I got I got really excited about it, but great, we need to get in on this before Rossesh fun, Rossesh finds out about it. Um anyway, I called them and it to see if they if what the deadlines were and all that sort of thing. And actually, they're very excited to spend this money because it's not going very fast. And there's a rolling deadline and they were very anxious and excited to hear that we were interested in doing it. So um they uh it's a it's a program specifically for nonprofits, businesses, and government agencies to get electrical vehicle charging stations, to get the infrastructure up and going in the state. Um and the exciting thing about it is they really want to do uh government buildings and provide those. Um and it's eligible, it's you're eligible to do level two or level three fast charging stations, either one. Um the other entities besides the government have a maximum uh limit, but government buildings do not have a maximum limit, which is really exciting. So they're really interested in getting this infrastructure going. Um this is it. They provide fifty percent of the cost. So that meant as the Grand Center is a a grant, as a county uh building. So we had to come to you to look at seeing if you would fund fifty percent of it. But the nice thing about that is is there's all kinds of other tax incentives. So it may not actually, you may not actually have to pay fifty percent of it. But that's the way it's set up right now. Um the other exciting thing about it, because I was very concerned if it wasn't to get started on this right away, you may not have it budgeted. But once you apply, get all the things that you need, such as getting Rocky Mountain Power to determine how to cost the cost of the the uh equipment and then looking getting bids for people who have to get at least two bids that would put it in um and submit that. And once it's approved, you actually have two years to get the infrastructure in. So that's exciting. It would give us two extra years to get the money put in the budget next year or whatever to do it. The other um exciting thing is that um the infrastructure bill um is given a lot of money to every state. And the Green Cities program is very active and they've been very responsive to talk to us and uh looking at the kinds of things. So we're in a we have an opportunity to have a partnership and do the city and the county and and maybe even broader to put something in that that we can all work together and and work as a partnership with. And they were very excited in this grant to for us to work in partnership with other people. Um one of the things I learned when I did a little research is that um they have found that businesses or people that put in the infrastructure, that's where their employees start buying electric vehicles. And this is actually funded by the uh Clean Air trying to clean up the air in the state of Utah. So um that was kind of exciting that once, because people said, well, why would you put it in if our employees don't have electrical vehicles? So what they found in their research is once you put them in, people start buying them. Um it may be in the Rocky Mountain Powers website, so this may be the best time historically to do it. There's more money available right now because of these grants and the infrastructure bill that passed more available now than we will even have in the future. So it seems like we should get as far as I'm concerned, jump on it right away. Um the uh Green Cities people are looking at uh vendors, appropriate vendors. And we know from the early projects we did here in Moab and our our campground, ACT Campground was one of it. It was the campground that took got two of the low level ones from uh several years ago. But the problem is is that they've learned from this is maintenance. Um and having somebody here or having somebody available to come and work on it. So the nice thing about the partnership is if we work together, all end up getting the same kinds of chargers that maybe we can actually get somebody local trained and hired to do the maintenance. You know, we always want to economically diversify beyond tourism. Um so that might be an opportunity to help somebody get started in the business to help maintain it. And so it seems like it's a good time now to all work together, looking at what would be the best equipment and having somebody here and available. We don't want to have to go to Grand Junction or Salt Lake to have somebody come fix it. Um I know also they're targeting tourist areas in the state because um they're thinking that more tourists will come if they have the the EV chargers available and to actually start cleaning up our hair. So that's kind of the background. Um and uh
We have who asks? Our primary ask is uh approval to write a grant for the Grand Center um to include four to six DC fast electric vehicle charging stations. And the secondary ask is we asked if we could write a grant for approval for DC fast electric vehicle charging stations at other Grand County buildings. And I'd kind of add to that, see where the hospital would land on this uh because they already have some people that are pushing into parking at the Grand Center with their electric vehicle.
Okay, thank you.
Um. Thank you.
Any questions for Sheri or Kim?
I go. Are you looking more towards the, I believe there are the level three, the fast chargers, because there's a lot of complaints about the level two and the waste of money that they have in. So if we're gonna go that route, I think efficiency and speed would be important because unless you're gonna park your car out there and charge it all day long, that's kind of the issue with the level twos. I think the um grant requires that we visit
So you can do either one, but you definitely want to go with the the best chargers, the level threes.
Um what what kind of money are we looking at? What's do we do you have an idea?
We've looked into this extensively, what became immediately apparent to me because of a civil sanitary engineer is what matters more than anything else is how big a hole we have to dig and how far across what other utilities.
So more it's more the installation than
It's about, I think you came up with three hundred dollars for the equipment to sit there.
Yeah, it really varies because the level twos are fairly inexpensive. But the level threes are more expensive at the fast chargers. And you know, it the location that you want to put is is really critical. So like in the Grand Center, that in the back lot where there's lots of gravel, there's a uh
Their transformers.
Transformers right there. And so if if they're digging up and putting it in is is gonna be fairly close. Um so the cost can vary. It depends on what kinds of transformers are there, how much electrical that goes in there. So it it really varies. We thought that the maximum was gonna be a hundred and fifty um thousand. We thought maybe we could put four to six in at the at the Grand Centers. But again, it really varies depending on the chargers that you get. And then the maintenance of it. So it's
This is why the grant requires we get our utility to go take a look at their drawings about what they have because they've got what size conduits, what size wires they already have someplace. And if they can pull a bigger wire through it to go do something, then that's easy. If they gotta dig a new spot from spot to spot, that's expensive. And if it crosses six giant water mazes, then it's really expensive. Then everybody says that, we're not gonna do it there.
So when you said had most a hundred and fifty thousand is that each or for the four to six?
The whole thing. But I I it was really hard to tell because they can't get prices and we don't know how much the labor is gonna be. But I would think that the county could give us like a maximum and see what we could do with that. And and knowing that the grant would pay for it. If you decided on a maximum, look at how many buildings or what additional buildings you want to do and what the locations might be, how close they are to Rocky Mountain Power. Transformers and Rocky Mountain Power was great. They responded very quickly and they could come up, give us an estimate.
Yeah, I would say that's the next move for all of us to answer that you're willing to go have this in at your buildings, other buildings, or at the Grand Center. To get Rocky Mountain Power to say, oh yeah, that's great. We've got a cable already there that serves the hospital and the conduits. They're gonna have to pull another wire through it. Or they say, uh we gotta go through a gas line and four other railroads across there. That's a bad place.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, uh I I know this isn't an agenda item tonight, but I like the idea and um I think that it's worth pursuing. And I think that if we if there's good job finding these monies and uh thanks for that. And if it's sitting there for the asking that we should go for multiple county buildings as well. So I don't know if there's a uh who would be a good contact um for us regarding the other buildings, but I would like to see this on a future future agenda item.
Yeah, yeah, I I guess I had a few questions and comments. Um one is, do you feel I you know, you mentioned other grants in in addition to the state state grant. Um
Taxes and incentives.
Okay, so what one would hope with all the money going toward electrification that we could, you know, get a lot of chargers of only spending a pretty small amount of county money, you know, fifty percent is a pretty FD match. Um and so I guess before committing to one course of action here, I guess I'd want to know, you know, just what what is all the money available, you know, in in addition to when you you researched. I guess I think it makes sense to take a comprehensive, you know, instead of focusing on the Grand Center just because that's where the idea came up. You can look at other county buildings, you know, where that that sort of thing. So, you know, I I do think so I I think I agree with the broad aim that, you know, electrification is, you know, something of the future and there's a lot of money to to help get it going now. We should take advantage of that. Um but I I would feel more comfortable if we could do just a little bit more research, you know, and maybe that's something, you know, you could help with, or maybe Chris has already done some of it. I don't know. Feel feel free to chime in, Chris. Up at the table with the microphone, Mike.
So the there's, you know, some of the questions I have, like, what's the ongoing costs? And, you know, is the uh the county gonna be paying the electrical bills or is there uh a fee to use it? So the the users will be paying for the electricity. Okay. Um we can apply for the grant without making a commitment. Um the commitment will come when they offer us a grant and there'll be a contract that will have to be signed. And we can, you know, make a final determination at that point. I kind of wanted to get, I asked Sheri to come and present because I wanted to get your guys' impressions whether or not we should apply for the grant. You know, you can always apply for a grant if you're awarded. You say, well, we changed your mind. But that's kind of a little bit of a faux pas, you know, um to write a grant and then decline it when they offer it. So I tend to try to get, you know, at least some sense of what the commission would like to do before we actually make the application. Um but if you guys are finally proceeding, you know, we can have Sheri work on the application and then um you know, either bring it back for approval before we submit it uh or just, you know, submit it and then wait for a a contract to come through. There I think that there's a workshop in May, right?
Yeah.
And the city is also considering the similar thing. So if we did get the grant, I think that we, you know, want to attend this workshop in in May in conjunction with the city, start to figure figure things out with them as well. And it sounds like once we get the grant that there's actually a couple of years, right, where we can
Got two years.
Uh figure it out. We don't have to just move forward right away. But if we do accept a grant agreement, then we have to also budget for it. So we're looking at, you know, in in this case, up to seventy-five thousand if we go for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. And there's no budget for it right now. So that's one element that would have to be determined as well.
Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, I'm I'm supportive of it. I I think it would be interesting, and this kind of goes back to what Kevin said, is to look at the current sites also and like try to strategically place them throughout the community. I know there another one just went in across the river. And so I think to kind of look at the sites and it's like what strategic, what makes the most sense. I actually like the idea of the Grand Center in the sense that parking lots never packed full, right? It seems like it's nice to have sites that are a little easier for people to get in and out of and and strategically placed throughout the community. So
This particular grant is for that I'm looking at and why it's unlimited, like another business or something would be limited to a hundred and fifty thousand or seventy-five thousand. So but for for government buildings, it's primarily for employers. And um so it doesn't mean that it has to be limited to employees. So we're looking, so what I would like to see happen, if you're really interested, is for us to to look at Grand Center and then you give us two or three other county buildings that you'd like to see and maybe even give us a hierarchy of this would be next after Grand Center and this. And then when we send Rocky Mountain Power out to do the analysis, they could do all the buildings that you suggest. And then we could just choose in the end to only submit for however many buildings that you think we should have and whatever budget line you have. But it'd be nice to get them out there and get that analysis. We have some idea of what that cost would be because that's really the big unknown. So it'd be identifying a hierarchical list, a hierarchical list of uh government buildings, uh county buildings, and then locations of where they might be. Because we went at the Grand Center, we found a specific place Ken did where it'd probably be relatively inexpensive because there's no asphalt or anything there. Um so doesn't mean we do all those buildings where we had them in a in an order.
Thanks. Any other questions? Just question.
I'm I'm supportive. I think, yes, to move forward and especially with Chris's comments, I feel much more comfortable.
Yeah, if we had some estimate on how those might, how much it might cost to do that, it'll give us a much better idea.
People with Rocky Mountain Power and they've got all the drawings. Oh yeah, it's four hundred amps running right here.
They could give us suggestions of where as well.
That was actually my question along the lines. If they can give us suggestions to where they think some of our buildings uh would be most optimal. I they're they're the power company. Uh I would like to know from them too.
Yeah.
The appearances from um the people we talked to, thinking solidly back to that grant, is that Rocky Mountain Power uh wants somebody else to be responsible, saying, I want something along here that's close, like Fifth West or something. Um and then they'll spend the time and the money and the effort to at least engage in that. Said you built what it's starting to cost them to evaluate getting electricity down there.
And also, Kevin, I will look to see what other things might be available, like tax incentives, once she once it's put in. So this the county might get some money back.
We we don't pay taxes.
Oh, well. Oh, no. I know you just collect them. Um so I'll look to see if there's other things available and ways that money could come back.
Yeah, I mean, I I think there must be, but I I I think I would feel more comfortable proceeding if if I just knew the sort of whole universe of funding avail funding available to us is, you know, to make sure we're getting the best deal rather than just, you know, going the first path that that we noticed. So it seems like your research is off to a great start, but I just want to reassure
Rocky Mountain Power gave us a database, which is where I found the grant. So I didn't really look much further, but I got this one and it had deadlines that were associated.
Okay. But we do have to pay fifty percent with them. I'm trying to get that down to ten percent.
Is that my call? Ten percent?
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, Sheri. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is departmental reports and we have one departmental report today, which is the Justice Court. Yeah, great.
It's a better microphone.
Get tired of sitting. Great. Just in case, can you hear me well enough? I apologize. I've had a cold and now allergies. Um I'm Dana Lee. I'm the the judge for the Grand County Justice Court. Um I was appointed at the end of two thousand nineteen and took the bench in the beginning of twenty twenty um the justice courts, even though they're a separate entity from some of the other state courts, were managed by the counties. Um they still are under the judicial branch of government. Um therefore, we do fall in the same um appointment and then initially appointed and then retention election after that. My retention election will be in twenty twenty-four. That's if any interest has any of you that just went through an election, I uh judges are just retention. So yes, keep or retain or uh do not retain is the vote rather than having to run a campaign. Um myself, as the Justice Court Judge for Grand County, we're a rural court. I've had the opportunity to represent our court and rural Utah as a I serve as a board member for the Utah State Board of Justice Court Judges. It's there's ten judges for the whole state that are all justice court judges. I've served on that for nearly two years now. I also serve on the um Utah Judicial Council Standing Committee on Resources for Self-Represented Parties. I had to write that one out because it's really long. Um and then also I've served on the Green Phase Working Group. We're a group that um just kind of evaluated virtual hearings and what the state should do with that as a whole for the state. And then we advised the uh Utah Supreme Court as well as the Judicial Council. And then also with that, I ended up going to Lake Tahoe with a group um from the state. There was a few of us that were selected to represent the state of Utah uh at the Western Summit Region for Supreme Court Chief Justices and then also the National Center for State Courts. I got to participate in that. That was a really awesome opportunity. I got to do that with uh the Uh, the Chief Justice of the Utah Supreme Court, Chief Dariana, and then also, um, the State Court Administrator Ron Gordon. So it was nice to get to know some of those different people. Um, I don't think a lot of people have that opportunity, so I count myself fortunate. So it's probably a detail that you guys. Don't necessarily find terribly interesting, but for those of us people that know the the realm of people, it is quite an honor to be able to have, to have that. Have got to serve on that. I'm also the Associate Presiding Judge. For the Seventh District, uh, Justice Court Judges, serve on the Education Committee for the Utah State Court of Justice Court Judges as part of that. Um, duties for being the Associate Presiding Judge. Um, I also serve on a number of subcommittees I won't bore you with. I've already gone too long about all of the committees I do. But I keep myself busy. It's basically what I'm trying to tell you. Uh, the Grand County Justice Court last year was selected. As one of four courts in Utah to serve as a pilot court. For the Domestic Violence Compliance Court or Domestic Violence Compliance Docket. Um, pilot, um, is something that's still in the works. So hopefully we'll get that a little bit up and going. Um. Hopefully, I hope to see it roll out effectively where the community can start seeing that within the year. Um, being with four other courts that are doing it and a grant. And then we also have a mentor court from Virginia that helps us with that. And there's quite a lot to it. We're in the final steps of finalizing our policy and procedures. We're actually working on that this week. Um, so I hope to. Um, be able to be presenting sometime to you within this year and giving you some. Update about how that's going and what you can expect to see from the Justice Court and within the community and some additional resources. And information about, um, domestic violence and prevention offender accountability, and then also bringing in more resources. To the county for domestic violence treatment. Justice Courts. Uh, we recently recertified Grand County Justice Court is a Class Two Justice Court. Which is based on our, we're caseload, not the type of case. Um, so I think that's interesting and that's something that's kind of being looked at. Um, so we'll see what happens with that, if that affects classification. But we're a Class Two Court, which means that we also have an average of. Two hundred and forty seven new filings every month. We have, I pulled a report from. March, so a twelve month, from the preceding twelve months to this March, uh, the Grand County Justice Court had. Three hundred and thirty five criminal cases filed in the year, eleven small claims cases. And two thousand five hundred and eighty eight traffic cases. So that's in the last twelve months. And I pulled that in March, so. I think April would have been a funner time to see those numbers and what they do. Um, and then. Two things of interest, we are doing courts still primarily through WebEx. We do in-person hearings. When needed and requested, WebEx is essentially a Zoom platform. You're always welcome to join court via WebEx if you would like. Um, we don't have a, our courtroom isn't really equipped for hybrid hearings at this point. However. Our courtroom is managed by the state. It's under, it's leased through the state and then the. They're kind enough to let the Justice Court use the courtroom and all of its appliances that they have in there. Um, but they do have an upgrade coming that the state will be paying for and installing in May to make us, um, have hybrid capabilities. Including evidence sharing capabilities, updating monitors, um, believe a screen as well. So those are some exciting updates we should be having to our courtroom. And that will make hybrid hearings more efficient, meaning for you guys that if somebody has a citation or a ticket currently. They log into court and we do everything that way versus in the future if they they would have the option. To actually come into the courtroom and participate that way and still be able to have a meaningful. Interaction with people that aren't physically there. We also have a booth downstairs which kind of facilitates the same idea, but just not in the same room. So, I think that's kind of it. If you have any questions or concerns or would like to know more about Justice Court. Always welcome to reach out to myself or my chief clerk, Emily Butterfield.
Any questions?
What is that caseload that makes it a level two or blessed?
Um.
I'm just curious.
So it's actually a level two, if you want to hang on a second. I had this pulled up. Um, a level, a Class Two Court. It'll take me a minute to find it. I can, we just recertified, so it's in the packet that we did a couple of months ago where you signed it.
Is it dozens or hundreds or?
So we're two hundred, we have an average case filing of two hundred and forty seven cases per month. So that puts us in a Class Two. And a lot of, um, rural places kind of fall within Class Two. San Juan County is also a Class Two. Um, they do have more citations that we have. Um, I think they have more highways, so that makes sense. Um, and then a, a Class One would be the highest and they have quite a few case filings. And I I don't remember this specific number, but, um. It's, it, the Class Two is a pretty broad range of case filings per month, and so it's based off of that.
So how, what is, what is your self-assessment of how successfully the courtsmen? Going since twenty twenty? I mean, in in terms of either, you know, how justice is is meted out or things going smooth administratively or whatever you think is important.
Well, I still think. That's an interesting question. I feel like I'm on the spot for that one that I have to answer very carefully, but. I.
I I could answer or if if you'll let me.
I think that it's, I think that it's going the same and I think that it's going well. Um, the reason I say I have to be careful is because. I'm a judge and it's not really my role to, um. I have a very specific role, so I have to be careful about stuff like that that I would have input on, but I think that things are going. And I don't, haven't seen a a large change shift from pre-COVID to COVID to now. I would. It's, we still have a fairly consistent case, monthly case filing, so if that helps.
I think Judge Welsh O'Donnell's done a really great, great job. I've had the opportunity to be in her court both both as a defense attorney, a prosecuting attorney, a small claims. Um, attorney for litigants. Uh, she's patient with people. Um, one of the best opportunities that an attorney can have. With watching a judge is watching them deal with gross a defendants or gross a litigants. Because you have to be exceptionally patient and I've seen throughout the process that she's been very patient. With defendants, patient with people in a courtroom. She's respectful of the people in her courtroom. Um, and it's really nice to see. Uh, being able to do it online, that's a decision that the Justice Court makes. And it's been huge. There are a lot of people that come to Moab and get a citation for one reason or another. And then they go back home to New York or wherever. And because it's online, it allows people to come back and participate. And that's a huge access to justice issue that. Historically, people would either have to find a way to come back to Moab or they'd have to hire counsel. And so I think she's done a fantastic job of helping people out. From what I've seen.
Thanks. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation. Hey, we are, um, up to approval of minutes. So. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March, uh, twenty first, two thousand twenty three for the Grand County Commission's regular meeting. Second up.
So we have a motion by Mary, seconded by Trish. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand or say aye. And that passes six zero. So I just noticed Gabe, Gabe's not here. Is he, does he take minutes from the video?
Yes.
Okay. I hope the microphones continue to work. Um. All right. Next up is, um. County bill approval. Um, and this is. Total, um. Little bills of one million, three hundred and eighty seven thousand, seven dollars and ninety cents total payroll. Of three hundred and sixty four thousand, eighty eight dollars and six cents for a grand total of. One million, seven hundred and fifty one thousand, ninety five dollars and ninety six cents.
So moved.
Okay, so a motion by Trish to approve the bills as presented and seconded by Mary. Um, any discussion? All in favor? That passes unanimously.
I just wanted to make a comment is, uh, one thing that Quinn's, that's happened with this is, uh. Starting where at the bottom, you know, when you look at the bills and they highlight the ones that are real expensive. That was something that Quinn started and it's been very much appreciated. It helps you digest the bills.
Thank you.
And we'll add one thing. It was Jay Lennett started it. Jay Lennett.
Okay, but I, it's, I really appreciate it. So I just wanted the new commissioners to know that this has been one of the improvements over the years.
Okay, um, next we have commission member disclosures. Is there anything on this agenda that? Commission member needs to make a disclosure about bill?
I believe we're gonna speak to the HDHO tonight and I own one of those parcels. So I can just disclose that I am invested in that. Whatever you want to call it.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not a commissioner, but I did want to disclose one conflict. Uh, we're just of note for you folks, uh, Redtail Aviation donated to my campaign. Uh, they have a couple items that are on that the contracts have been reviewed and I'll make no statement of whether they should be signed or not, but they've gone through the legal process. And we've, we've reviewed them. There's four separate lease agreements.
Okay, thank you.
I have that same disclosure they donated to my campaign as well.
Okay. Evan.
Uh, I have, Clapper Ventures has used the services of the Small Business Development Center. So there's an agenda pertaining to that later.
Okay, roll here.
Yeah. Earlier, I have disclosures.
Okay, um. Next, we have, uh. General Commissioner Reports and Future Considerations and. Usually we.
I'll go because the the, uh, end of the month is slow for me. I don't have much to report, but I think that there was a. Uh, one thing that I would like to highlight is I think we were all CC'd on a, uh. Comment period for fee increases at the Sand Flats Recreation Area. And if you look at that, there's actually a fee decrease. Um, we're eliminating the trailer fee or it's proposed to eliminate the trailer fee for sand flats. And the idea behind that. Is to encourage people to trailer vehicles up there and not, and, um, so it's kind of a win-win for. Uh, folks who have already been trailering, they no longer will have that cost and folks who are, uh. On the route from town to sand flats, we're trying to encourage trailer use up there. So, um. That comment period is still open if anyone wants to weigh in on that.
Thank you, Evan.
I've got a couple of items. Let's see, I've had. Three meetings with Mark Stillson and the Water Board, um, and Price. One up in Price, several here locally with, um, him out in San Juan County mostly. There's an effort going on by San Juan County to try and. Pull some of the storm water in and use it to recharge the aquifer moving forward in the future. And they've got plans along those lines. And then Mark and I worked with. It was Ryan Holyoke at LaGrand Johnson to, with the discussion about using water, that there's excess water in the Somerville ditch that comes down and. Possibly putting that into one of the pits to help with the recharge also. And so there's ongoing meetings. There's no solid plan on that yet, but working towards that direction. Then I was involved in the tribe hard type. Am I saying that right? I think Trish had that last year. Or then, um, we held our meeting. Let's see, they've just been making great progress in helping people move out of poverty. Um, they did say that the food banks are at their lowest in fifteen years right now, that they're way down and that the number of people requesting. Services there is way up. So it's probably. Why they're so low, I guess, but it it is an issue for them right now that they're not able to meet all the needs they can at the food banks. They said they were working with approximately seventy grants regarding different aspects of trying to find funding. For people that needed it as well as funding or food at the food bank. So that's ongoing. I also met with the SEU ALG. And their board meeting, the overlooked the CBDG grants. We oversee that process as well as the revolving loan fund. The state governor's office, it was just, it wasn't disclosed, I guess it was just. Put out there to us has economic development loans for rural counties and for businesses if there are. Businesses looking for money that's coming out of the governor's office. Let's see, the staff is also exploring a possible name change. Several ideas were floated out there. Um, I struggle with the acronyms. As it is currently SEU ALG and then we've got about five others that fall underneath that, but. Couple of the names, one of them was Arches Regional Council, which would be ARC, certainly a shorter one. And Bookcliff's Regional Council, BRC. So there, there's no tentative date of when that needs to happen, but they are trying to shorten it. Um, they, someone mentioned. The CBDG as grants available for different things, and I brought up the need possibly for future. Funding for Grand County on some water monitoring that was suggested by multiple people. I think the most recent was the. Lady who was here last time, Laurel or Laura Hagan. And I know that's something that Arnie's always working on and I think everybody. So there's possibility for some. Grant money that could help us in that. Monitoring that needs to take place. Uh, CIB, I think we've all been working on that list and had multiple discussions. And so I called and discussed with Tamara, I think is her name. And she said that we're putting way too much thought into it, that this is a very, very preliminary and that that will. All be narrowed down later that really our comments at this time had very little to do with that. And that she assured me that there would be no empty slots. Everything would have a dollar amount and then that would come before us again in the future. It's. I I'm not quite sure why the process is like it is, but she did say it would be cleaned up and that we would, um, see those. With everything filled out. I don't think that gives us some of the information that some of us wanted, as in what those projects actually entail, but. From her end, she said that it would be back before us. Let's see, I also had a meeting with the local realtors, uh. Courtney's HDHO discussion tonight or her comments, and that was the biggest thing that they had also. Um, very, very frustrated with the HDHO, um, some frustration over the ADO as well that's come out recently. And a lot of that has got to do with the lending if, um, an individual has a private residence and they end up with four. Basically camp spots in their backyard or RV spaces that that then turns that into a commercial. Process. And so there's some real funding issues for the group, the, um. Lenders on those issues and they think that that still needs to be looked at as well. Those two were their biggest concerns and of course they. They had a whole list of them, but we don't need to go into all of them. But tho- those were a couple of big ones, the HDHO and the ADO. And then just the final update, um, I've been fairly well involved from the very beginning of helping Doreen as many people have. And we're very close. Within a week, I would hope that she's actually living in her home and that's gone from. Donations from many people here, from almost every contractor in town to some local people just on their own financially and a lot of them. Just doing whatever work they can to fill in there. But. Doreen's very excited and it's getting very close to where she'll be living in her home. So look forward to seeing that and. Maybe one last plug, if anybody does want to continue to participate financially, she has an account or not she. Somebody else set up an account at Wells Fargo that donations can go to toward. somebody else set up an account at Wells Fargo that donations can go to towards that project. And that's the end of mine.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so and Kevin was also there. There was a future land use planning and it was a very large group of diverse county and city representatives and a little yeah, just a little bit of everybody. And I thought it went really well. There was just great discussions. We also did a mapping exercise. So we have some additional meetings coming up. I had a planning commission meeting. We had we discussed the four ADOs that we had originally pushed forward with the intent to apply. And they sent a favorable recommendation unanimous forward for all four. There was quite a bit of discussion, which I think we'll touch on later about one. And and I think that that's something that we can talk about. And I went to a Zone Seven Conservation District meeting. It's their large meeting that they have have every year. Really interesting, just a lot of money coming out of both the federal and state government for producers and farmers specifically, you know, in the northern part of the state doesn't really pertain to us, but emergency funding going to, you know, livestock producers specifically for feed and loss of, you know, this is just such a hard winter. They're losing a lot of livestock that are hitting the ground and and dying because it's cold and still snowing. And they spoke a lot to the Inflation Reduction Act and the type of projects that will fall into that, which are things like soil health, wa- water conservation. So just a lot of money out there specifically around soil health and and water conservation. Um, cash from Divisional Water Rights spoke to specifically to House or Senate Bill 277, which basically, you know, manipulated in the in the past, there was really no incentives for the agricultural community to conserve water. And we know that the ag community uses 70% of the water in the state. Because if you don't use it, you lose it. And so that bill really manipulated that and made it to where they will retain their water rights if that water isn't being used directly on for ag production, but for other uses basically down the pipe. So and Cash spoke to that when I was at the MOP meeting also. And then lastly, I went to the mosquito mosquito abatement meeting last night. They did their first treatment yesterday. So we're getting there. And the other thing, just they're in the process of hiring their seasonal techs and that's about it.
Thank you, Trish. Mike.
Mine's a little shorter, but I tend spoke with Osta, Old Spanish Trail Arena. Uh, they are hosting the Jeep Safari event and we're in preparation for it as an annual event. And speaking with CNHA, we're they're working through a partner employee housing, uh, trying to get those up and coming employees for those partnerships coming into the area. I did miss the Grand County Recreation Special Service District meeting, but we'll get caught up at our next one coming up. And to the special events advisory committee is actually a discussion point later today. So we'll be discussing that. Or some more points on that that came from that meeting. That's all I have.
Thanks.
Yes. I had two Grand County Economic Development meetings. One was just on strategy and how to move forward and what's going on here and talking about whether or not we, if there's a way to continue on lower, maybe not with quite as much money, but starting to see a way we could do a revolving loan fund. And we will be talking later on about USU and how we can maybe keep that commitment going. So we talked about that. They we also worked on defining what diversification is and economic development. And boy, we have a great board. I mean, it was just amazing. The definitions that the various board members came up were elaborate and well stated. It was it was very exciting. And as soon as I have those written down, I'll share. When they get them back to me, I'll share them with you guys. They will be impressed. It was pretty nice. And so it's moving forward and we're trying to figure out how to adjust our work. On the 28th, I met with Union Pacific Railroad to talk about a spur from Salt Lake to Moab. And it's look, you know, it could happen. What what will make it happen is Rocky Mountaineer is considering expanding. And then they will put in right now, one reason they can't use that railroad is there's no entrance from coming from the west going east. And that's extremely expensive to create, you know, that spur. And so that, you know, that but now Rocky Mountain near is considering expanding. And if that happens and they choose to build the off off part from going west, that could make that possibility come to fruition much faster than we thought. So that was really good. And we met and saw that we talked about eventually having close to where the tailings pile, the Umtre project is to having like a deep hole or something out there. So that was it. It was a very good, very productive conversation. I had my first meeting with in person with Four Corners and Green River. But that's an organized board. They give you training and everything and they manage. I I thought the thing that was most interesting was they managed 15 different properties. You know, we just think of Four Corners as this building. But it it's really elaborate. They they have a lot of properties. In Moab, we have the Moab Clinic, the new one, which is really nice. The Interact Club that's there as well. They have the Willow Residential Area. Uh, the Ridge View Apartments and the Aspen Grove Residential Area. So their presence in Grand County is is pretty large, much larger than I anticipated. And a very well-run and organized group of people working on that. Then after that, you have the Health Board. And they went through what their vision, their vision statement for this year. And the vision is communities in which all citizens live long and healthy lives. The mission is to assist the residents for communities to achieve and maintain optimal health and wellness. And their goals are to provide, I won't go through all the goals. Cut it short there, but you know, they're working on that. It they're not going to be moving over to the campus where the free health clinic is. It ended up that it was more expensive than they anticipated and they were losing space rather than gaining space. They were really sad that that happened because they were excited to be where there could be more collaboration and there would be a closer vicinity, but it just isn't going to work out. So that was a disappointment for everybody. I met with Mike Maurer last Friday. So did Bill. And Mike Maurer is Chief Deputy for Governor Cox. And he came into town and wanted to have a review of what's going on with the Umtre Project. And so we met him at that Everview. We've been there and showed him what's going on. And we had three members of the DOE staff join us. Matt, that's the head of it and Sasha, who is just under him and then their PR person. So I thought that went real well. He was very excited and it's very supportive of helping us move forward into turning that, helping us find money and ways to turn that into a nice facility for our community and visitors. And then last night I went to the USU Celebration of a Year. It was really nice. They had these great T-shirts of women drill welders. And it was it was really, it was a fun, exciting celebration. That's my report.
Thank you, Mary. My turn now. I was also at this Land Use Co. Steering Committee meeting that Trish talked about a little bit. And I think Elisa later in our meeting is going to be touching on some of those same issues. I won't say more about that. I'm also attended with Chuck, the Responsible Recreation Committee. Quite a bit going on there. So this, I'll mention a few things, but this is by no means everything. You know, we already have a trail ambassador program that, you know, tries to reach hikers and bikers. And now we're trying to expand into motorized trailheads. And that includes, you know, hiring some people in addition to hiring equipment so that people can get out on trails. So a grant application for that. Um, they some the staff floated an idea for downtown ambassadors, which would be apparently Durango has something similar. So people just hang around on sidewalks and engage with tourists. So I just I'm not just mentioning it because it might come before us at some point. Let's see, they're working on putting up some metal information pavilions and places where the trail ambassadors are active. So this would be Mill Creek Trailhead, Gruna Arch and the Brands Trails, for example. There's a lot of interaction, you know, the, you know, this is the 21st century. So, you know, people use apps to get around instead of things like the visitor center or paper maps. And and staff has been engaging quite a bit with the people who run those apps. So that's going along two problems. One is engaging with All Trails, which is the dominant phone app for hikers and trying just to correct information on the maps and just because a lot of its user generated might not be accurate. And that creates management problems on the ground. It's, you know, there's still a bit of tension there. I think the the company doesn't want to just have like land management agencies or local governments tell them telling them what to put on their app. But they are willing to listen to us some. And so I I think that's kind of being felt out. And then in addition to that, we're trying to create our own app that will be specialized to Grand County. You've we've probably heard about that once or twice before when discussing the EDD Department Budget. And it's called the Wander App. It's that is proceeding. I think it's it's a little bit behind schedule for most people first hoped. And I think that's largely due to the company itself having a transition of employees. But that that is, you know, definitely moving along and supposedly moving better now than has in the past. There's a discussion about in-town advertising and how we'd like to do more of that. And then finally, and then one aspect of that was, you know, replacing our current billboards. Grand County currently has two billboards in town. Um, and that brings up, that's a good segue to a future future consideration. It's it seems to me that the way in which we we the county commission approve or decline or just let staff approve advertising is a little bit chaotic and ill-defined. And so I just wonder, and it's a kind of a question for other commissioners, would you be interested in having an agenda item at a future meeting where we try to kind of hammer out just what the person, you know, like if it's a billboard that everyone's going to be looking at for two years. And yeah, that comes before the commission. If it's, you know, little details of social media campaign, you know, maybe there we let staff decide, but you know, we just set the overall direction. But there's a big middle ground between those extremes that we have to decide. Because I think if, you know, if we're not careful, you get this kind of too many cooks thing, you know. You know, everyone has a different opinion about these these things. And so I guess what I'd like to see is some kind of procedure that doesn't, you know, put too much of a workload on us and allows things to happen quickly, but still makes the important decisions bubble up to the top. So I'm seeing some nods. So I'll I'll try to work with August to get that on the agenda sometime in the not-too-distant future. Okay, elected official reports. Even you have anything to report?
Just a couple of things. Had the opportunity to go to Taylorsville for a newly elected training. We learned about internal controls, OPMA and conflicts of interest. I've been able to start taking over some things that I was excited about when I ran. I'll be taking over the drug court program as the attorney for the state. We are excited to announce today, we extended an offer for the position of the CJC Director after doing two rounds of interviews and involving a lot of community members, Andrea Noyes. We extended an offer to her and she signed that offer today. So she'll be starting in a couple of weeks. And everything else has been continuing onward, not well, this we also have an update on other things. But next time we meet, I'll ask for a closed session to discuss litigation updates to be able to go through. I'll be able to reach out to you guys individually and kind of give you an update on that as well. That's everything.
Thank you. Mallory, you have anything to report? And sometimes we separately ask Quinn. Okay, so moving right along. So now we're up to general business items. And the first one is approving the final plat and subdivision improvements for the Mandarin Field subdivision.
I'm I'm here on Zoom. So if that's okay, I'm just going to present virtually here on that.
Take it away, Elisa.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. I'm going to share my screen so you can see the plat. If if I can get the ability to share my screen right now, I'm just disabled.
Yeah. So for those of you who haven't heard, we've tightened down Zoom security a bit because of an incident at a recent planning commission meeting. So it's going to be a little
I actually brought up your face, Steve, in particular. Your face was great during that event. What happened?
Nothing.
Afterwards, huh? Yes, sure. Yes.
I'll just start presenting on the staff report here. So this is an application for final plat of a five parcel HDH.
Are you able to share now?
Uh, let's see. No, not not yet. I'll keep trying. But I can just describe the the plat for you. So this is an application for final plat of a five parcel HDHO subdivision designed for single-family dwellings that consist of lots ranging in size from 0.2 acres to 0.36 acre. Four of the proposed lots will be deed restricted for actively employed households as required per Land Use Code Section 4.7. The property consists of a 1.48 acre parcel with an underlying zoning district of large lot residential. The HDHO five district was approved for the subject property via ordinance number 610 on April 21, 2020. The amended and restated development agreement for the HDHO development was approved on February 21, 2023. Allowing for a one-year extension to record the final plat. The new deadline to record the plat is April 21, 2023. One dwelling unit currently exists on the property along with one barn structure, which will be removed before recording the final plat in order to make it compliant with the direct district's required setbacks. Lot one with the existing dwelling unit will not be deed restricted. A 0.32 acre portion of land fronting Mesa Road and Desert Road is being dedicated as a county public road. And half width roadway improvements will be completed along Mesa Road per the subdivision improvements agreement. No utilities other than individual service lines need to be extended to serve the parcels. In the absence of jointly owned roads or drainage facilities, covenants and restrictions are not required. Individual detention basins are proposed for each property, maintenance of which is the responsibility of individual property owners. The drainage maintenance requirement and the county engineer approved drainage plan is described in the plat notes on the final plat. The final plat application is consistent with requirements set forth in the Land Use Code, Article 4.7, High Density Housing Overlay Districts, Article 5 Lot Design Standards, Article 7 Subdivision Standards, and Article 9.5 Final Plat. The final plot is also consistent with the approved master plan for the HDHO development. This is an administrative decision and staff recommends approval of the Mandarin Field subdivision final plat and associated documents. Are there any questions on this one?
I do not see any questions. You would like to, Mary?
I move to approve the finding to a fact set forth in the staff report dated January 6 to 2023 and the proposed resolution approving the final plat for the Mandarin Field subdivision with the following conditions. One, the owner shall record the SIA simultaneously with the final plat in the recorder's office and two, the owner shall submit and two, the owner shall submit an acceptable completion assurance bond for the incomplete public improvements and infrastructure warranty bond for complete accepted uh public improvements as established in the SIA to the county in the amount set forth in the SIA prior to the re ordination of the final plat. Did I say that right? Uh, the owner shall continually comply with the county engineers' requirements and the ordinance number six one zero uh HGH O rezone and the amended HGH O master plan and development agreement.
Hey, motion by Mary and second by Bill. Any discussion? Okay, um, and I'll just remind remind the public, this has been before us multiple times before, so gotten used to voting for this, this I think might be the last one. So um all all in favor. Okay, that passes unanimously. Um, okay, next agenda item is independent contractors agreement for the renovation of the community development building, former interactive clubhouse.
So we put this out the bid, we got one bid back from Moab Construction for the amount that's in the the package. Get there. So uh we're raring to go and getting getting that remodeled so we can get some office space. And uh we're synchronously uh trying to recruit an engineer as we speak. So hopefully, by the time that the remodel is done, we'll have a engineer hired and ready to put them in there. And uh as a reminder, this is where uh planning and zoning and building inspection will will be housed as well.
You know, the timeframe for the renovation, and then we'll move in.
Well, we're hoping a couple of months. It'd be a little longer, but that's our goal.
Okay, any other questions for Chris?
I move to approve the agreement with Moab Construction for the remodel of the community's belt development building for the amount not to exceed two hundred ninety one thousand three hundred and sixty nine dollars.
Motion by Trish, do we have a second, Mike? Seconds, um, any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd Moab's pretty small town here, but as a contractor, I definitely worked with Moab construction, not currently doing so, but.
And. Oh, I just go, I thought I thought you were gonna say something good or bad.
With him in the past and okay, I don't see a problem voting him, but.
Okay.
It's out there.
Thank you.
I just said thanks for all your work on this. So I just see it move forwards. So thanks. Yeah, I have to give a lot of credit to Bill Holson Cole, who's not around anymore, but they did uh most of the work actually doing the design for it. So, yeah, thanks for those guys as well.
Okay, I'll call for the vote along in favor. And that passes unanimously. Next, we have voluntary appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission, and it looks like Alisa is gonna be handling that one.
Yeah, in the absence of Jacques, who is the commission liaison for the Historic Preservation Commission, I'll be presenting you um these letters of recommendation. So this is for three new members to be appointed to the uh Historic Preservation Commission. We had four applicants in all, and of those four, um, three of them showed up to the March sixteenth HPC meeting for interviews. After the chair conducted interviews of each applicant, HPC members voted unanimously to forward a favorable recommendation to appoint all three applicants, those being Joe Kingsley, Dennis Brown, and Jessica Chamberlain-Mah. And those uh letters are in your packet from the um commission chair, Jody Patterson.
Thank you. So I I recall um in in some other discussion about this that I I guess some of the existing HPC board members resigned to make room for these three applicants who they felt enthusiastic about. And then as a result of that, there's been some discussion about maybe making the number of members of the Historical Preservation Committee, you know, expandable, because we're always happy to have enthusiastic volunteers to work on that. Um. So, I mean, you know, that's that's not an action item right now, but I just wanted to remind folks that that idea has been floated. And I guess if we if we do want to follow up on that, we should on the agenda at some point. Mary?
I move to approve the appointment of Joe Kingsley and Dennis Brown to serve on the Historical Preservation Commission with each representative term expiring on twelve thirty one, two thousand and twenty six. And appoint uh Jessica Chamberlain-Mah for the term vacancy expiring on December thirty first, two thousand and twenty three.
Motion by Mary, do we have a second? Seconded by Bill. Any further discussion? I don't see any, so I'll call for a vote. All in favor, raise your hands. And that passes unanimously. Next agenda item is operating agreement between Canyonlands Regional Airport and Redtail Jet Center LLC.
Hi, everybody. Tara's here for Tammy.
Yeah.
Um, hi, everybody. And I think is Randy Martin there?
Yeah, he he is in the audience.
Oh, great. Okay. Uh, Tammy gave me some notes. I'll just read them. Uh, the previous agreements with Redtail expired in twenty twenty. Everything went to a monthly term until the new lease template was written by the previous director and approved by the former county attorney. And then had final review, final review by Redtail Air, resulting in a two year process. The airport board approved extending the FBO agreement, that's fixed based operator, to twenty five years to offer Redtail incentive to invest in the development of the airport. This is common practice for airports seeking financial assistance in offering amenities for general aviation clientele. In the last ten to fifteen years or longer, we have had no other companies interested in providing FBO services at the airport. Redtail has continuously improved services provided at the airport and are making efforts to continue improving services offered. Randy, do you have anything?
I think you summarized so really well, Tara. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Tara? And make a motion?
I'll make that motion. I move to approve the operating agreement between Canyonlands Regional Airport and Redtail Jet Center LLC.
Second.
Motion by Bill, seconded by Mary. Any further discussion? Okay, carrying on, call for a vote. All in favor. That passes unanimously. Um, so we have four fairly similar agenda items. Um, next one is a lease agreement between Canyonlands Regional Airport and Redtail Jet Center for terminal building office space. Tara, anything new to say about that or?
No, the the comments I made apply to all four agreements.
And for the commission, for the commissioner's information, the reason why it's separated out is there are different contracts and different agreements. Um, we didn't want to just assume that commissioners would just sign one for all their each particular different things. For example, the second one is or a lease agreement for the terminal building office space. So that's why they're all separated out.
Okay, and didn't you you want to just briefly remind the public how we review contracts before we sign them and like you you've reviewed these?
Correct, yep. So what is what has happened here in in Tara was correct. There's been a negotiation back and forth between uh between the airport and the business itself. They had particular items that they reviewed, discussed, went back and forth. Um, and then I've reviewed the documents as well. There were things that were raised and questions that were made. This is the ultimate culmination of all of the different uh parts of input. The goal is to have, and Tara can correct me or add in, the goal is to have essentially a partnership. That's the last document that you guys approved was an operating agreement. An operating agreement sets down the ground rules between the relationship between what the county is going to have with Redtail. It puts in certain obligations that they have to complete and things that we're going to give them. So there's expectations set forth on both sides and parties come together and sign and sign the agreement. Does that cover everything you want? And if people have other questions, let me know.
That's great. Thanks. Okay, uh, Mary?
I move to approve the lease agreement between Canyonlands Regional Airport and Redtail Jet Center for Terminal Building Office Space.
A motion by Mary, seconded by Mike. Further discussion? Not all in favor? As it passes unanimously. Um, next one is a lease agreement between Canyonlands Regional Airport and Redtail Jet Center for Redtail Terminal Space. Mary?
I have moved to approve the lease agreement between Canyonlands Regional Airport and Redtail Jet Center for rental terminal space.
A motion by Mary, again, seconded by Mike. Call for the vote, all in favor. Passes unanimously. And the last one, number seven, is a lease agreement between Canyonlands Regional Airport and Redtail Jet Center for bulk fueling stations, self fueling, self fueling island and mobile fuel trucks.
Yeah, I move to approve the lease agreement between Canyonlands Regional Airport and Redtail Jet Center for boat fueling stations, self fuel, self self fueling island and mobile fuel trucks.
Well, I'm gonna give it to Bill. Okay, Bill Winfield, seconded the motion by Mary. I'm just spread, I get tired of writing the letter down on my notes.
Yes, I'll stop raising.
Um, okay, all all in favor? Uh, also passes unanimously. Um, okay, next one is maybe a little bit different, uh mutual aid agreement between the airport EMS and Moab Valley Fire.
Yeah, um, the mutual aid agreement is required by the FAA. This is an FAA approved template that was originally approved by the former county attorney Christina Sloan. The FAA requires the airport to have a specific mutual aid agreement outside of any state or local agreements already in existence. Um, this agreement does not outline financial terms as it is not required for this agreement. Payment obligations are outlined in county agreements. The FAA only cares that fire and EMS will show up when they're needed. If the issue of who is in charge during an emergency comes up, the agreement refers to that and is also addressed in the airport emergency plan and also referenced in the agreement. Anything that happens on the airport is under the direction of airport management.
Thank you. Um, Mike?
Move to approve the signed mutual agreement between the airport EMS and the Moab Valley Fire Department.
Motion by Mike. Do I have a second? Seconded by Bill. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. And it passes unanimously. Um, okay, thank thank you, Tara.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Handling such a large number of agenda items. Um, then we're next, next item is a budget amendment concerning Small Business Development Center Agreement. Chris Baird?
So we entered into an agreement with USU. It was a three year term, hundred thousand a year um for the business consulting services of the new Small Business Development Center to be located at the new USU campus. Um, with the passage of HB four sixteen, we won't be able to use transient room tax money past July first to make good on the terms of that agreement. So what I'm proposing is that we pay out the full three years of uh that contract uh prior to July first, when the HB four sixteen repeals the statute for the diversification funding. Um, so we have about four hundred thousand in general diversification funding budgeted. We already have a hundred thousand in this year's budget for the SBDC. So what we'll be doing here with this budget amendment is just basically moving ten hundred thousand from the general diversification allowance into the SBDC to make it on that contract. And I think, you know, I've worked with economic development staff and the economic diversification boards, and they all agree to the SBDC is a high priority to uh get get going with the funding we have left this year. So we'll we'll collect about half a year. It's worth a TRQ that could be used for the uh diversification services. So my proposal is to prioritize the SBDC at this point and fully fund that three year agreement.
Hey, Chris, could you remind us just what the S, what we're getting for the month contract?
Yeah, so right now, the uh business consulting services, um, there there isn't actually a uh an employee that works out of Grand County. Uh, you have to go down to um Landing or Monticello, I can't remember which. Um, if you want small business consulting services uh, you know, through USU. And uh that include, you know, the the service area for that one in employee down in San Juan County. You know, it includes all San Juan County, uh, the uh the tribes plus uh Grand County, maybe some others as well. So it's very stretched out. Um, what this would do is create uh Small Business Development Center location at the USU campus and help staff that location. So we'll actually have somebody here in Grand County providing uh small business consulting services. And the the agreement, I think, is in the packet.
Someone from USU here?
Oh, yeah, I was gonna, Mr. Betcha Burgers from USU.
Oh, would you like to come up and say anything about this? You don't have to. All right, okay.
Tara, yeah, just just one point on this for the commission, just pointing it out, not indicating one way or the other, what the commission should do. Item ten on the contract um does state that in the event that the county fails to budget or appropriate sufficient funds to meet its financial obligations hereunder, um, the county won't be obligated to make any payments otherwise. Whether the commission wants to fulfill the contract or not is up to the commission's decision. I just wanted to point that out for the commissions, so you're fully aware.
Thanks. Um, I guess another, there's an email was circulated that showed that I guess some some of the existing work by, I'm assuming this person who's based in San Juan County. The Grand County work, quite a large fraction of it was actually tourism related businesses. If we expect that to continue in the future, then couldn't this also be, you know, instead of funded out of diversification money, some fraction of it could be funded with tourism money?
I uh I asked that question in the state auditor's office, they advised against it.
Didn't it? Okay. Any further questions for Chris or discussion? Want to make a motion?
I'll let you do that.
Are you gonna do it?
No, go ahead.
I move to approve the budget amendment for the USU Small Business Development Center Agreement from one hundred thousand to three hundred thousand at an authorized payment to USU for the full terms of the agreement.
Motion by Mary, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Bill. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just had a question that came to mind. If we weren't gonna take this out of the TRT funding this second, the two hundred thousand, I guess it would be, would that have just come out of the general budget or is that? Well, it could, um, although the general fund budgets, you know, a much leaner budget, um. We are gonna have, I'm still trying to calculate it, we are gonna have quite a bit of diversification uh monies to figure out how to spend July before July first. And so this is actually gonna help us figure that out. If we don't spend the money before July first, um, it's my interpretation, it'll be required to be spent on tourism promotion. I'm I'm not against using the funds. I was just curious where they would have come from, if it wasn't from this part. Well, I think the is is uh our county attorney pointed out, the non appropriation clause kind of foresaw that there might not be funding available, which in which case we just wouldn't pay it. I see. Um, but we would always have the option to pay it from a different funding stream as well, but that would have to be, you know, determined at at the point in time. So you know, it is possible to allocate other funding sources as well. I think this is the most appropriate, especially considering that we're gonna have a fair bit of diversification money to figure out how to spend before July first. So like I said, this this actually helps us figure that out.
Any more discussion?
No, just maybe just a general comment, maybe a question. So I, again, that email that was circulated. Um, she kind of gave some stats and and of these stats to me is just throwing this out, it's total contact and prep hours nine hundred and twenty one ish. Um, which to me is like part time, like half time, right? It's, I mean, as far as, I mean, maybe a little bit more, but but I'm just wondering, and I can't remember, and maybe this is a. It's, I mean, as far as, I mean, maybe a little bit more, but, but I'm just wondering, and I can't remember, and maybe this is a question for Leanna. Was this a full-time position in Moab in the past? Like, I remember when it was at USU and, was, do you know if it was a full-time position? Okay, okay, that helps me, thank you. So, so something to think about. Okay. Okay, thank you, that helps me, thank you.
Yeah, and I think, you know, given that it's currently located in San Juan County, that utility from Grand County residents is probably a lot lower than it would be if it were here.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. By Mary, seconded by Bill, any further discussion, motion? Okay, let's call for a vote, all in favor? And that passes unanimously. Next agenda item is prioritization of the fiscal year 2024 Permanent Community Impact Fund Board Project List. This is the one that, so Bill told us really in the meeting was not that important.
What's that? So, I mean, the, the trick that we have to figure out is the the ALG has their ranking meeting on the eighteenth, which happens to also be our commission meeting day. But they go over all these projects, so each entity will show up and they'll describe their projects, fill out any missing information. But then they'll rank the projects in the same meeting. And so, the first time they started doing this, I think Bill Jackson and I showed up to the meeting, we weren't entirely aware that that's how they wanted to do it in the past. Prior to that, we would just rank it and the ALG wasn't really involved. So Bill and I just ranked it ourselves, because we had to, there was no other option. But moving into the future, you know, it was, the commission wanted to have the authority to actually make the rankings themselves, which created a situation where we had to rank these projects prior to the actual ALG ranking meeting, because if we showed up without the commission voting on it, then we would have nothing to offer. There is, you know, it's likely that these projects will change, some will probably, you know, maybe get taken off the list. And others may get put on. And so, you know, this ranking may not be entirely apropos to what ends up, you know, showing up, but at least we'll have, be able to rank most of them. What will come back to us, what Tamara was saying, comes back to us for final approval, is each entity will submit their rankings, the ALG will average all those rankings and then come up with an average average. And that's what they'll ask us to approve ultimately. And so, you know, I've never really seen the CIB board use the rankings for any reason, you know, but they do require that if you apply to the CIB that your project be on this list, this short-term project list. And so, having your project on the list is important, because you can't apply if it's not. And that's the main, main point of this exercise, to make sure that our projects get on the list. It looks to me like, is this the one that I created? So Kevin actually did some, did some work for me. I'm wondering if we can, did you send that to the commission admin too, Kevin?
I've got it on my screen right now.
Which, is this logged in on commission admin? Who's this logged on? Will you forward that ranking to Alicia? Because that's the one I need to bring up, that's the one that's ranked already. But anyway, while, while that's happening, maybe I can help answer questions about any of the projects, if you have any. The ones that I'm most familiar with are gonna be Grand County's projects specifically. But I might be able to shed some light on some of the other entities' projects as well, if you have questions.
I, I also feel fairly familiar with the county ones, but maybe with some of the city ones. And kind of, if there's any high priority ones for them there. I know they often show up on these lists for a few years before they gain priority.
Yeah, so I'm seeing with Moab City Storage Tank, one point five million dollar, or one point five million gallons water storage, and the wastewater reclamation plant outfall line, I think that that's the concept with that, if I'm not mistaken, is that they would move at least some of the outfall to the wetlands. Because it's, you know, the wet, it, the, it's part of the reason why the wetlands are drier than they used to be is because less of the water is making it to the wetlands. It's bypassing the wetlands and going straight into the river. So I think that there is some concept that if they, the treated water went into the wetlands, that it would help the wetlands and, you know, obviously get into the river also. So that's my understanding of that particular project. Then we've got USU Milk Creek Drive-Spanish Valley Intersection. And that's been our, been on our transportation plan for a long time and, and also made it into the new unified master transportation plan that the city and the county just approved. The, that Moab City-Grand County won the rent, building renovation for public health nonprofit facility, so that was, you know, the the old USU campus. And that, that particular project, I've determined if, for instance, Grand County or the Health Department were to actually purchase part of it and own it, that the part that they purchased or owned would be eligible for CRB funding. However, since the nonprofit is the sole owner, they're ineligible for CIB money. So it's likely that that one will come off the list at the, a meeting on the eighteenth, just because I think it's ineligible.
So, Chris, I, I shared the doc with Alicia and also sent an email. But if that doesn't work, I'm on Zoom now and I could try to share my.
Is your email up? Stop sharing. Here's the one that has the ranking. So that, that middle one, the project rank, the, the ALG's wanting us to rank them numerically from highest priority to lowest. And so you all ranked them using zero to ten scoring system. Except for Trish and Kevin, inter- reinterpreted it.
Fixed that today, but it didn't catch my, sorry about that.
That's all right. But anyway, so you can see the ranking, at this point, number one appears to be Spanish Valley Drive Multi-Use Pathway. Number two, office space and other facility upgrades. And emergencies, emergency communications. That's one, you know, I asked the Grand County Sheriff, this came on in prior years. I asked the Grand County Sheriff and Emergency Manager for more details on that one, and I haven't received them yet. So I'm not entirely sure what that one's about. I'll just go over the, the top few here to give an idea. And then, fourth is Thompson Springs Reservoir Feasibility Study. Number five, Boulder Avenue Stormwater Detention. And then the Mill Creek Drive-Spanish Valley. Intersection improvements, Stormwater Detention Pond, Spanish Valley Drive and Vista Grande. Number seven, Solar Power Project at Canyonlands Airport, so this would be like the, the match on on that project, which I think is about fifty-six thousand, so that'd be a kind of a small request if we made it. Anyway, you can kind of get the gist there. Again, you know, the actual rankings have never really had any effect on the outcome of a successful application, in my experience. So I don't think we have to worry about it too much, but they do request we go through this process, and so if you approve this, then I'll take these rankings to the meeting on the eighteenth and present them.
So does anyone want to make a motion to approve the rankings that Chris is presenting?
We're going with the motion that's here, or these rankings?
I can't remember, what did I write the motion as?
I have moved to approve the CIB prioritization list for submission to the SUA of local governments.
Okay, I just have to clarify that the prioritization list is this document that we're.
The one we're looking at right now, yeah. Not the one in the packet, because that was, you know, the deadline for the packet was before anybody ranked it.
Okay, so I have a, a motion by Bill to approve the prioritization list as presented in the meeting. Does anyone want a second? Mike? Any further discussion? This pretty important item. Okay, well, I'll call for vote, all in favor? Passes unanimously. And that brings us to our last action item, last, last one on this part of the agenda, which is the county fair budget contribution.
All right, so this is, oh, you gotta, no, come up to, or wherever you want, you can be up here. So this is another budget request. And what I'm proposing is that we fund this out of what would have been the second half of the diversification funding. So, you know, we're looking at roughly five hundred thousand that we were expecting to go towards economic diversification in the second half of this year. But since HB four sixteen passed, that means that that entire budget's been essentially nullified. That we're gonna have to figure out what to do with, you know, upwards of around five hundred thousand dollars. And so this is a start to that, you know, I want to do a more comprehensive budget amendment process, you know, and, and work with the travel council advisor board, economic development committees, et cetera. But since this is coming up and it's a, you know, a big important project for Angie, and we want to just get it all figured out. And I'm presenting this now, you know, before the main budget amendment, so we can nail down the funding for the county fair. So the proposal then is to pay for this out of the transient room tax, would be the five hundred thousand that needs to be basically rebudgeted.
So what was the amount you wanted?
Oh, so forty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars. And so Angie's done a good job of itemizing everything, putting together a very detailed budget for it.
I am really excited about it, I've talked to Angie about this. I'm really excited to see this come back to our community, I think county fairs are a really important thing for, for communities. I was a little surprised when I saw the budget, I was like had to swallow hard. Was like, where is this coming from? I find that it comes out, we've got to spend that money, but my concern is for the future, right? So as long as you're concerned about the future too.
As far as the money, we can actually use more money as far as inventory and making the county fair more of a county fair, as far as being able to handle stock, things along those lines, we need to be able to develop the correct pins, to be able to handle those type of animals. So we need to get there, because of something, a work of progress. So we have to start somewhere, and then also just some types of the booths as far as the farm-to-table, getting those type of exhibits, they're expensive. So something we definitely need to fundraise for to get there. So we won't have those this year, but the goal is to get there, okay?
Yeah, so in the future, you know, this would be a budget request that would come before, before the budget advisory board, you know, during the normal course of budgeting. And so there was some concept of, you know, assisting with this out of the special event grants that Economic Development Department administers. But I think it's more appropriate just to make a direct appropriation, since it's an internal project. And so, you know, considering that, what is this, like a four-day event? It's actually, you know, a reasonable price, I would say, for that.
Yeah, I, I agree that it seems reasonable, I, I think it's a, a good use of this particular pot of funds that we have, so I'm, I'm I'm excited to see that we've got big plans and definitely open to considering, you know, expanding it in the future, if this seems like a success.
Are you gonna take a turn in the dunk tank?
At what time of year is it being held? Oh, yeah, sure.
That'll be the best place to be.
Now raise the bonds.
And what is that budget number again? I'm sorry, I missed it.
Um, I, I think you could just say fifty thousand, right?
All right, fifty's a good round number for it. What, seven dollars to work?
Do we make the, the awards, like the Stanley Cup where they come back every year? So that's like ten percent of the funds, and it's like.
Our parts and secure some welding from USU. Extra stuff in there, so that's a budget. For the car and tractor show.
I think it's great.
I'm gonna make a motion, if that's okay. I move to approve the two thousand and twenty-three county fair budget contribution in the amount of, can I just do fifty grand? Fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, we have a motion by Trish, seconded by Bill, any further discussion?
No, I just want to thank Angie, I know you guys have been working really hard, I wanted to come to the meetings, it just never aligned. I think it's, it's, and it's cool that there's community members really excited and helping. I hope they're helping. But I will help. Okay, great.
Wanted to say thank you again for the work.
Thank you, yeah, absolutely.
And, yeah, and I, I think this add, adds some variety and diversity to the events we have in town, so I'm glad we're able to make it happen. Any further? Anyone else? Okay, then I call for vote, in favor. And that passes unanimously. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda, we have two consent agenda items. One is a letter of support for Forest Through Fire and State Lands Grant Application. The other is a letter of engagement for the appraisal of real property owned by Grand County. Prove the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Seconded by, motion by Trish, seconded by Mary. We don't do discussion on the consent agendas, all in favor? It passes unanimously. Okay, so it brings us to our discussion items. The first one is planning and zoning twenty twenty-three roadmap.
I just saw it.
What's that?
It's like, we just saw it.
Now I'm here, magic. I do want to share my screens.
Suppose I have a citizens, we heard six. Or, we can, you know, usually we just do it after, but it will be almost done with the agenda. Yeah, I, I guess, yeah, go ahead. Oh, wow, I just noticed that, gavels, I haven't been using them.
I only had to use it in one meeting. A number of times.
All right, so here we go, I'll try to get through this quickly, I know.
Do you want to point the mic a little bit?
So we worked on developing this list of priorities with the planning commission back at the start of twenty twenty-three, and here we are already at the end of quarter one. And, or actually, beginning of quarter two, quarter one's already behind us. But we wanted to make sure that this list of priorities is in alignment with what the commission sees as important efforts to pursue. And if you think there are any efforts that should be pulled from this list or reordered, we just want to make sure that we're on the right track. So for quarter one, the focus was mainly on this idea that there So for quarter one, um, the focus was mainly on this idea that there must be some tangible things that we could identify, which are causing housing developments. To either not get permitted, or if permitted, actual construction is being delayed. So we held a public workshop and specifically reached out to developers, builders, realtors, and the like to get feedback on what the barriers are to housing in Grand County. From that feedback, a few areas of concern were identified, which I've included in the list of possible efforts to pursue in quarter two. So we'll circle back to those in just a minute, but, um, it was also during this time that we started to get public input around the H D H O. Eligibility requirements and possible issues with lendability. So this topic is also included in Q two to potentially look into further. The other big effort in Q one was, of course, picking back up with the future land use plan. Which included drafting the scenarios and holding our first land use steering committee meeting, um, of the year. We also spent many staff hours working with the, uh, the site futures committee in the effort to update the community's vision for the site. Upon its full remediation. The culmination of that effort will be a final site, uh, final report presented to the Upright Steering Committee. Quarterly meeting on April twenty fifth, so that will be all wrapped up at that point. Also, in Q one, we revived the Thompson replat, engaging the county surveyor in order to iron out the last remaining issues. That property owners had with the new parcel boundaries. And that effort will likely be, well, it is already carrying over to quarter two and probably for the next few months to get that wrapped up. So moving on to quarter two, we have a lot planned, um, let's see. Just, this is the bottom section here for quarter two. Uh, including seeing through the adoption of the Moab Area Affordable Housing Master Plan, which is an effort spearheaded by the Housing Task Force. We expect a final draft to come before Commission for Review in late April and early May. We hope to also wrap up the future land use plan and adopt it by the end of June. We still have a lot of work to do with regards to public outreach and ensuring we get. Broad community support for the changes proposed. So two public workshops are planned to present the future land use map scenarios to the public and specifically. We'll be reaching out to those neighborhoods, um, that may see the most impact from the changes. Ultimately, all the steps listed in the right column here on quarter two. Sorry, I lost my place here. So all of those steps in that column there are are going to culminate to, um. Land use code updates, which would incentivize housing diversification, affordability, and increased residential development feasibility. And these steps here are not in really any any particular order. I feel like they're probably gonna need to happen somewhat concurrently. Um. So, let's see. So there's, um, a bit of a timing conflict here too, that I want to mention. With the June date for adopting the future land use plan and then subsequently adopting land use code updates that would establish the new. Multi-family residential zoning districts that we've talked about. As we have a developer that would be proposing a multi-family apartment project, um, through the low-income housing tax credit. In order to provide much-needed low-income housing. And that program requires proof that the developer applicant has the proper entitlements, meaning the higher-density M F R zoning. Um, would be applied to that property by the end of May of this year, so it doesn't really align with our timeline to get the future land use. Plan updated and adopted. Um, but that is a comprehensive planning effort that we've kind of always had. Plan to to do in this way, and so now we have this, um, sort of. A little bit of a conundrum with timing on, um, to if we're going to try to accommodate that particular project, which. Something we can talk about, but I just want to bring that up. Um, moving on, these steps here, uh, so I already said that, that they're not, um. These steps here in the right column do not need to happen in this order necessarily. Um, the two topics that we are, I'm hoping to get your input on, and this column here is. Are the ones highlighted in yellow. Um, these would require changes to somewhat longstanding policy, including looking into ways to offset the cost of public improvements. For mom and pop subdivisions and revisiting the H D H O eligibility requirements and rules and regulations. So the first one, dealing with, uh. The cost of public improvements was a a concern identified during the housing barriers workshop, and it has been something. We've been tracking in P and Z for the last year and a half as well. Where we've had multiple minor subdivisions proposed, but they could not move forward due to the costly requirement of paving the public right of way as a. As required by the construction standards. For large developers, this cost can be absorbed without too much impact, but for small mom and pop applicants, this is often a deal breaker. And even if the applicant is able to put up the cost for these improvements, it often will drive up the sale price of those lots or housing units. Further exacerbating the, um, housing unaffordability problem that we have. So in speaking with Bill Jackson about this topic and the road improvements that have historically been required, he believes that the construction standards. Could be revisited and possibly are due for an update anyway. To evaluate if the roads that are planned for these improvements do in fact warrant the need. There's also the possibility that there are examples out there of communities that have found ways to still implement a policy across the board. That all development must pay for their impacts, impacts, but for certain qualified property owners, there could be some sort of assistance in funding. The improvements, or maybe there's a workaround for the timing of paying for the improvement, so that it doesn't have to be an upfront cost. Uh, but that it could be paid over time as lots are sold. So looking into solutions around this issue would take some staff time, but with our new in-house engineer coming on board soon, it surely would be doable. So that that's the first, um, topic that I just want to get your, your feedback on, I suppose, at this point. See if that was something that we should be spending staff time on and working at the planning commission to, um. Brainstorm ideas and solutions.
So are these internal roads in a subdivision or the?
These are, um. Like, for example, a minor subdivision on Murphy Lane was proposed and. That corridor is slated for, um, major widening. And so any anytime there's a subdivision on Murphy Lane. That property owner is required to pave and widen the right of way, and it. To the point where it actually approaches upon the existing residents, um. It makes the lot non-conforming with the setbacks. And so it's just kind of all kinds of problems. And it's also very expensive to do, so.
Yeah. Well, I I guess you're asking for opinions. I'll get, I mean, I've often been struck, you know, in the past twenty or thirty years that. I think we have subdivision rules that maybe make sense for larger subdivisions, but when you apply them to smaller ones, you know, it doesn't really seem very sensible, so. If we've, you know, looking for ways to avoid that, seems like a good, good idea to me.
It seems like a good idea to me also, but is there any hard delineation between large subdivisions and mom and pop? Is there a number?
Uh, well, so mine, I kind of consider it like a minor subdivision, probably.
Yeah.
Um, I think that would be something to look into, though. I mean. Even for the Manderfield, that's a five, five lot subdivision, and they were required to put in, to do the parade road paving. Um, which I think was partly why they had a delay because trying to find the funding. And figuring out how to do that.
Um, we don't usually take, um, in these discussions, but there's a citizens to be heard. Coming up real soon, and so you could. I guess we could just clear, okay, so should we pause for citizens to be heard right now? Okay, so, yeah, please come. Um, they can't hear you online unless you're at a microphone, so you could use the podium. Um, and and could you state your name, please?
My name's Becky Manderfield, and I'm involved with the Manderfield Project. And that's the issue. I think, I think this is a really good example. Well, I don't understand the, I don't know any of the Murphy one, but. You know, we're trying to get four lots in here, um. For. Someone in the community. And. It just, if you've been out there at Desert and Mesa, it makes no sense for me to add some. Beat to that little chunk of Mesa. Um. And at the cost, I'm really hovering at a. It being a problem for a locals to be able to buy those bad lot, those four lots. If I was trying to make money on this project, it would be impossible. Uh, the road thing has really added, uh. Crunch to this whole project. Um. And it just. There's nobody else on the rest of that Mesa Road that can change their property. And add, that would be adding to that road. And so you're gonna have this little strip on my side, and that's all that will be there. And hooray in forty years when you get ready to add Condamesa, and then that little strip I've spent the money for is gonna have to. Be probably tore up and redone all of it. It's frustrating, and I I just. Considering what this is supposed to be about, I know it's not affordable housing, but it has to be affordable housing. The HD, you know, this whole project has to be affordable housing for a local to be able to buy the lot. And to build.
Okay, well, thank you for your comments. I mean, I I adjusting what Mike said, I I think deciding what the difference between big and small is is part of the discussion.
I'd like to speak to, to that Manderfield subdivision, just because I've helped Jessica. Unless we're gonna go.
Oh, yeah, I just, sorry, I didn't realize there were other people for citizens to be heard at six. I, that's my mistake.
No worries.
No, 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 I I think we, I want, we want to go through all citizens to be heard, and I should ask online as well, so.
Yeah.
I apologize, um, people in the chamber, so Emily, go ahead.
And relevant to this as well, um, so I'm Emily Campbell, and you are. Hearing currently from Alisa about the planning and zoning roadmap for the year, um, but I wanted to make some personal comments in my role as a citizen. And as a constituent of many of you. I'm concerned that the county is not acting with the urgency that our housing crisis demands. It has been months since the Planning Commission worked with the Planning and Zoning Department to put together this list of suggested priorities to address our housing crisis. We're now four months into the year, and despite these being publicly available in our packets and public meetings, we are only now hopefully receiving direction. To move forward. We need you all to lead, and I'm not seeing you show up the way we need you to. The recommended changes to make it easier and less costly to build ADUs received a positive recommendation from the Planning Commission last fall, six months ago. I know many of you are advocates for ADUs, yet we're still waiting for this to advance. Why wasn't this item put in future considerations, added to an agenda, or pushed forward? For years now, we have heard feedback that the definition of actively employed households are too strict. It limits the success of H D H O housing program by increasing risk and cost for builders and for prospective homeowners. And it's not meeting the intent of the program to create a fair housing market for locals. As an advisory body, we have consulted with developers, housing officials, prospective homeowners, and critically assessed viable paths forward. The Planning Commission, as you're gonna hear from Lisa, is ready to take this up, but we have not received any input from this body to move forward. I'm concerned that this is selling because we're not getting the direction to move forward with the urgency that this needs. Uh, Alisa told you, I'm right in the middle of it, told you about the workshop that, um, the Planning Commission hosted with builders and developers to directly address the concerns. That we continue to hear in our meetings, but also as individuals in this community, addressing things like county laws and policies that make it more costly to build housing for residents. We took the initiative to create space to hear and amplify those issues. Seventy members of the public took time to attend on a Wednesday night. Several Moab City Council members and planners attended as well, even though it was a county-focused event. We only had one member of the County Commission show up. There are so many people in this community volunteering personal time and energy to help each other find homes, raise awareness of these issues, and come up with ideas. Finally make a dent in this crisis. I'm concerned that this urgency of the issue is not compelling action fast enough. But that urgency is being felt every day by families, members of our workforce, employers. The issue is urgent for the families that are underhoused or unhoused. The issue is urgent for the parents worried about the stability of their housing situations for their kids. And for the teachers who know that far too many of their students aren't sure where they're gonna be living next month. The issue is urgent to the employees who make up the bedrock of our economy, but who can't afford to live in the town where they work. And it's urgent to the employers who are trying to provide essential services to our community, but despite pay raises can't keep staff due to housing shortages. We can change this. I know and hope that we can make Grand County the place where innovation happens, innovation in water and land use. I beg of you, please, to take bold steps and support urgent action, unblock us and move this forward. If you don't, I'm afraid, once again, this is going on for far too long. This issue will become a convenient talking point for political campaigns and then get kicked down the road. So, personal. Go back to the chair.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment for citizens to be heard?
Hey, everyone, uh, Steve Evers, speaking as a resident of Grand County. Um, for context, if some of you are are newer faces, faces to me at the commission, I'm also a co-owner, co-owner of Murphy Flats. Uh, condominium development, that's an H D H O project. Prices, a time of intense difficulty, struggle, or danger. Grand County is experiencing a housing crisis. I, we all heard this over and over for many years now, too many. Are you acting as if you're trying to solve a crisis? I know many of you are, and I've seen it, and I know the fight is long. It's not over. Please continue the fight. I want to clarify, what I believe are some misleading things that have been said. Over the years about, about the H D H O and and the developers and the people doing. Uh, one of the things I've heard is that legal challenge, legal challenges to the interpretation of the H D H O rules and regulations is why. H D H O projects have not manifested. That's false. Speaking to our project directly, specifically. The whole question of challenging the interpretation of those rules and regulations, that delayed our project three to four months. Here we are in total, we're. Four, over four years since the passage of this ordinance, over five years since that, that ordinance was created and first, you know, being developed. There are eighteen units that are occupied by locals or are in construction. Or a few flats has thirty of those, so I share that just to show the difference there. Only eighteen units in four years. That's not a good batting average. I'm not a baseball fan. Don't know why I said that. I want to add that ours really is only possible because we found one Grand County unicorn angel investor. That's what, that's what we call them. Um. So to underscore the legal challenges to the H D H O rules and regulations, I don't think that delayed anything. Not significantly. Here's a quote. We gifted the developers bonus density and they turned around and sued us. It's a direct quote from a Grand County elected official, former official. You have any idea how painful that is to hear, to hear the disdain and the resentment in someone's voice for you simply trying to fix your community's? Greatest need or what we claim is maybe our greatest need? To be considered nothing more than a money rubber, you know, the evil developer. I'm here to say that's, that's not what we are, who we are. Um, I know in this community. There, at least from my experience, I I know that there's, there tends to be a kind of disdainful look towards developers. I know because I was, I was one of these people, I, uh, absolutely hated development, what it stood for. I wasn't even a conservationist, I was a preservationist through and through, and the encroachment of human civilization on the natural world, I, I loathed it. And over time, I've understood, and I've gained an appreciation of what development is about and what it provides. In closing, H D H O is one of the strategies to help the housing crisis. Nobody creates something and calls it perfect the first time. They reflect, they learn, they improve. Please reflect on and improve the H D H O included with that, the, the definition of the active employee house. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else in the chambers of? comments for citizens to be heard? And is there anyone online? See any likely suspects online? Okay, so we'll now resume Elisa's presentation. I think Bill was about to say some things.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to speak several of those items for sure. Um, the Mandarfield project. I've been with, involved with Jessica from day one and met her mother through that process. And just up the street, they widened it completely, and I believe there's a, at, at least a hundred condominiums in that project that required that street to be widened, and then you come down and they're trying to put in an HDHO project, Jessica is, which is trying to help out the people that need the help here locally, which Steve just spoke to as well as Emily. And to put the same restrictions on just a little section of street in front of her when nobody else in the whole neighborhood will have it is just a huge financial burden, and I hate to say it, but I'd probably help them quote that project. I don't know, three or four times, too many times. And here we are almost five years into it and we're finally approving her project with these additional costs which get passed on to somebody. They have to be passed on to those new homeowners. And, and it's astronomical, the dollar amount that that adds to each one of those lots that's trying to house a local who works here and is trying to make a living and it, and it just adding it on. And I do own an HDO unit too. I was the first applicant. Um, I took half acre lot and I cut it into two quarter acres. I've yet to get rid of the second one and I'm five years in. It's, um, I could give you a whole list of complaints about how people didn't qualify to live there, but, but I'm not trying to talk about my own. I'm trying to talk about hers and the money that's being spent there. And Stephen's right, there were many of us that didn't get involved in the legal aspect of it. I didn't sue the county over mine. I could have joined that. And there was no point in it to me and to it's just like he said, we need to look at it again and we need to restructure it because it wasn't a perfect setup the first time and we can't let our egos be the determining factor of, we've got to die on the sword here because this is the way it's always been. Well, it's only been this way for five years. And the, the numbers I heard was, I think we've got like fifty-nine units under construction. I could be wrong, but there was three hundred intended and we're, we're behind fifty-nine in five years. I, I consider that a failure. It's certainly not a success, so. I, I think that there's room to look at both of those avenues and ways to make it for somebody like Jessica to where she can do a subdivision and where then people can get into it and those people are, we see them every day from every coffee shop that we work in to every place, place of employment in this town. And they can't afford what a two hundred unit complex, people that are coming in from out of town and buying those up, they can't afford it. We've got to try and keep those costs down anywhere that we can.
Anyone else, Mary?
I know, uh, Jacques and I talked about the importance of having a workshop to, oh, to do this and we, we looked at doing it today. But he wouldn't be able to be here, so I know we're hope, we want to have a workshop at the two o'clock on the next, uh, commission meeting to start hammering out and getting things written up so that we can make a motion and move forward. As I, you know, so that is in the works and, and I know Jacques wants that and I think the commission wants that. As a person who was involved with the HDHO from the beginning, it was a novel idea. And it was, uh, created with the full intent to do good. And we need to now look at what didn't work and what did work and adjust it so that it's more effective. I mean, that's what you do. That's what you do with lesson plans. That's what you do with everything when things aren't working well. As far as things not coming to the commission, I don't know how the breakdown happened. I know for myself, I'm very concerned about housing and would be willing to look at or, or have any proposal that's brought before us. But, you know, I don't know where that, that happened, where the breakdown was, but I couldn't bring up a proposal. I wouldn't have the means to do that. I could, I can encourage and I have encouraged staff. But, uh, so we need to figure out how that breakdown happened. Because I don't want it to continue to happen. I think it's very, it's not good. It's not good and it's not, it shouldn't have happened. And so that's the other thing I want to maybe be part of it. How, how could we have speeded this project up? How could we have had this workshop a month ago? How could we have done this? And a lot of times we're depending on the people that come prior to us to let us put it on the docket. And so we need to figure out how to get that on the docket in a more reasonable space. So, you know. I've seen Courtney here and, and people here working from the beginning and, and I've really supported this process and I want to see it work. And I'm sad it hasn't worked better. Because we worked so hard to get, Bill was a lot of those meetings. We worked really hard to get it even voted on, right Evan? It was a big difficult, and there was a lot of believing and a lot of people opposed to it. We had a lot of people not happy about it. And it was a long bruising process and now we need to go back and look at it and make it better.
Okay, so workshop before the next planning or the next county commission meeting? Yes?
Yes.
And then what do we want that workshop to be about specifically?
So, do I, I do, I did want to mention that, um, I have tentatively set, uh, to, to have this item as a discussion item on our planning commission agenda for April ten. So, um, I, I assumed that everybody was on the same page. We would be going forward with this effort, so. I was thinking we could have a brainstorming session at planning commission and really nail down those. Um, I've been collecting all the different recommended changes from the
Okay.
Members of the public and others and the kind of things that we've been tracking. So, um, we can have that staff report of planning commission and then maybe that will kind of help to inform the workshop at the next commission meeting.
Okay, so I, I think, um, do you get any assistance?
Yeah, I just weigh in one thing. I think it's important, one of the things that's going to come up for the commissioners is a possible change on one of the definitions of active em- employment. You guys have all received all the emails. That's something that I want the commissioners to give me input on, on what you guys would like to see going forward. Um, if there are things that you guys have seen in emails or things that you guys are thinking of that you would like to see changed, I'm more than happy to draft different options for you guys to review if we're going to make definition changes because that's one of the things and that's listed on the second. I don't know if you're going to go into more detail about that um, today, but that's something that really has the ability to open up the possibility of usage a lot. And so, oh, if you guys can give me direction on kind of what you want to see, I can help craft things that way. But it's up to you guys at the end.
Thanks, Stephen. Um, so we're going to get back to your presentation eventually.
Yeah, no, it's, it's all part of it. It's, it's a presentation discussion, so I kind of wanted to go through some of these and then talk and then, yeah.
It's under discussion.
So, so I, I guess I, I'll make a, a, a two-part comment, you know, one to the, the, the narrow question you asked about. Um, reviewing, you know, reviewing some of these subdivision rules and maybe they don't make sense either for small subdivisions or for some HDHO things that I, I, I do agree with that and my, as I said before, I, I felt for a long time that there isn't enough flexibility in county's things, in, in county's subdivision rules regarding things like putting in sidewalks and widening roads and things like that. Um, I, you know, before, we definitely want to, if someone does think it's a good idea to require providing, you know, we should listen to that before we make a decision, but I, I'm having trouble imagining, you know, a defense of the current set of rules. Um, about this, this larger issue of reforming HDHO, I, I certainly agree that, um, you know, we, we, we're not going to get things perfect the first try and it's been a while since we had, I guess it was twenty nineteen that we hammered out the, the current set of HDHO rules. And so, yeah, definitely we should review them and see how we can improve. Um, we've received via email and via comments today, you know, a pretty wide variety of suggestions. And I, I, I find some of them compelling, others I'm, I'm a little skeptical of. And I think one thing to keep in mind when, when considering these things is the possibility of abuse. Um, i- in other words, you know, pre-creating, you know, lower cost housing for people that, you know, are not are not targeting, maybe they just, you know, moved here and took advantage of some loophole that we accidentally created, so that's we're thinking through hard. I think when we came up with the original HDHO rules, that was very much on our minds. And, and as well it should be. I, I think if you look in pretty much every big city I know that has rent control departments, it has a lot of people who are holding on to those, you know, you know, someone who's rent is a third, you know, just one third of the market rate. And, um, you know, it's really nice to have one of those, but that, you know, the program isn't working because it's, it's not getting targeted correctly. And then so it, that's an unintended consequence of some, you know, rent control laws that were intended to help out people who needed to pay a lower rent. And I, I think if we're not careful, we could fall into something similar with HDHO. And so that and so I, I, I just think as we review the various suggestions, that's one of the things we should keep in mind. Um. And another thing worth keeping in mind, and this is, um, you know, this is a little bit a tougher issue, I, I think, but I remember when I, you know, I was on the planning commission during twenty nineteen when we were working on HDHO. And the subject did come up about, you know, what about, you know, childcare, you know, you know, a lot of people, you know, they're not the policemen or the nurses that we really feel like we need housing for. And, um, I think of, well, I, I'm not going to name names for who's, who said it. It was, wasn't me, but someone said, you know, you know, we should we really need housing for police officers. We need housing for some county employees and for, you know, hospital employees. And some of these other people, yes, they're, they're great. It'd be great if we could give them a low rent, but that's you know, the county just has, has to prioritize. And so it's not, HD issue was not, never intended to be you know, less expensive housing for everyone in Grand County who we felt deserved it in some way or another. And I think if we had tried to make it such a problem, you know, if we had tried to include every single one of such people, then we would have inadvertently created some loopholes. And, and so again, that's some, something to, in, in the these future discussions that we have, um, we want to think about that.
Yeah, we've got one more comment. I, I think one of the biggest hindrances that everyone, everybody has struggled with is the, as Stephen Courtney have found it, Unicorn or Fairy Godmother is financing because these projects take a lot of money upfront and many developers don't have that kind of money and there isn't somebody locally. So to look at a way to allow funding to come from wherever, whether it's Wells Fargo Bank or somebody's uncle in Arizona, the, the issue that was restricting a lot of this because thankfully John Knight stepped up and participated there. That's huge in Courtney and Steve's project to have some local funding for that. So.
Yeah, I think to, to your question, Stephen, I think that, um, I agree with Bill that that's more the stuff that I'm interested in seeing and workshopping ideas around is, is the financing, the kind of broader subdivision requirements. Um, I think that the question of eligibility. I think there's still plenty of people in this community that, that fit those eligibility guidelines. And, um, I think that it's a lot about, uh, the pricing and the financing and, and looking at that sort of stuff. Um, a lot of these emails that were coming in, you know, they were, uh, concerned about the resale and, and it's my understanding of the way it's written now is the eligibility is determined at the time of the sale. So you buy the place, if you change your job, if you lose your job, if you get hurt, whatever, that doesn't affect your ability to be there. It just means that whenever you are ready to sell it, the next person has to meet those eligibility guidelines. And to Kevin's point, I don't think that, um, uh, I think that this was designed for our workforce. We hear a lot from the Main Street businesses that are saying that they need people to, uh, work in the coffee shops and and scrub the dishes and be in the grocery stores stocking shelves. And that's really what we are trying to, uh, address here. Um, it wasn't designed to be a retirement program for, to create retirement opportunities for people in the county. Those exist. We love retirees. We'd love to have more of them in. Um, it wasn't designed to attract unemployed college students. That, that was never my intention with it, so that's not necessarily something I'm interested in seeing. Um, I don't want to see out of town, remote workers that are getting Bay Area wages or Manhattan wages to compete with the guys scrubbing the dishes on Main Street. So I'm not interested in, uh, having remote workers, um, included in the eligibility. So, um, I think that, uh, there's a lot of good opportunity here. I think that the timing was uh, strange with, um, although one project was involved three months and other projects was in litigation over a year, you know, a year and a half. Um, and then we had COVID and then the supply chains and, and, uh, that led to a lot of delays. Um, and correct me if I'm wrong, there, there was only nine applications that were approved. So there were nine applications that were approved. Two of them are already done. Um, ones that are doing open houses, they're ready, you know, so things are moving along. Um, there's a few big projects, a hundred and twenty-two, that's almost half of the eligibility tied up in one project. Um, you know, and, and it's my understanding the ball's at their court. I don't know why, uh, developers keep coming back asking for extensions. Um, and honestly, I'm closer towards, uh, pulling those back and offering those I'll to other developers that are eager to, to make moves. Um. I know that that it's not perfect the first time. I think it's more about the, the coding and that sort of stuff, but this is a, a unique, um, program. It's the first in country, you know, that's why it took two years of planning to get it launched was because there wasn't a cut and paste option. Um, and, you know, with, with a, a few large projects holding up the total number of units. Um, you know, that's really what I see the, the shortfall in it being, so. Uh, to answer your question, I don't think the eligibility question is, is the place to start with how to improve this. And, um, I do see this as a, a bargaining chip that if we're really trying to, to bargain and, and stick up for the, the Main Street labors, this is uh, what we have to do. And if we loosen that up, that's doing a disservice to them. Um, to Mary's point, this, this was a big uphill battle. Um, there was not a ton of support for it. The first time it came up for a vote, it did fail. It got reworked again. Um, and so I think that we're asking a lot from the neighborhoods where these are going in to, to kind of accept a hundred and twenty-two apartments in their backyard. And I think that that's a big ask for us and I want to really, uh, make sure that the community is getting a return on that compromise of increased density. So, um, I think if there's subdivision rules or things like that that need adjustment, uh, I'd like to start there.
And, uh, and I'll make it short and just with Evan. Historically, this was, we had this chamber packed with people opposing the HDHO. It was very hard to get through. And I want to improve it.
Um, it's a, a, a short comment. Um, I, I might have been misinterpreting some things were said, but it, you know, so apologies if I did, but it, it sounded like people were saying, well, things have come out of the planning commission and they haven't made it to the county commission yet. So reading between the lines, it sounds like, you know, we're blaming planning staff. We're not moving fast enough. But I, I do think that planning staff, you know, works very hard. That's my observation. And so, you know, maybe the message is we need to, you know, double the number of staff peoples and that would be pretty expensive in the county budget, but we could probably make things move faster if we, Lisa had two or three extra people working under her, but
Yeah, I mean, I, I was
But we do have just a finite capacity and sometimes things take longer than we wish they did.
Yeah, I think it has more to do with like your meeting schedules and the agendas that were packed full. And I was getting feedback from the admin staff to push this, you know, to future dates. And we had it, um, had it kind of on the agenda several meetings ago and then it kind of keeps getting pushed, but um, it it was just, I think, just timing circumstances of everything else going on with the start of the year, you know, so.
Okay, so um, so now pausing for the moment on the big, big picture H D H O. Oh, I'm sorry.
How do we ask? How do I ask as a commissioner? To make sure that we have a workshop on our next agenda, two P M? Good?
It sounds like
We he wanted, we wanted to have it this week, but it just didn't work out.
You know, just just to make sure we're all on the same page and and maybe I'm um, foolhardy for for bringing this out. But the commission, the planning and zoning commission, they're going to do a workshop on next Monday, essentially, right?
It'll be on our agenda for a discussion to a brainstorm.
Right. And so are there things that the commission wants to see them look at specifically? Because if the commission gives a nod that we want to see them to consider the eligibility question, or if there's a nod to consider, you know, financing, digging into that, then they would prep for a Monday meeting to discuss those topics. But if we don't want them to do that, then we kind of miss an opportunity to to have kind of progress on this. Do you see what? Do you see what I'm saying? So I I don't know if it's something particularly that the commissioners want to suggest to them that they would entertain seeing or not.
Or I might even suggest putting the planning commission chair hat on. It would be beneficial for us to have direction from you all. If you would like us to have a workshop prior to your workshop, we can also plan to join you or try and schedule something for next week in the interim that you all for some of you can join. But that would be hard to notice. But yeah, anything we can get to get clarity on direction, I think, would help us move this faster to a recommendation that you all want to take.
Yeah, so it sounds like Mary and Jacques were the driving force behind the upcoming commission workshop. So maybe you can work with the planning department and planning commission to see if there's anything you want them to just, you know, that would mesh well with our discussion two weeks.
And I really liked the direction that Evan was going. I think if we're going to look at it, that's the first, we can't tackle the whole thing. So I think we should get head nod. I think we, the first thing we tackle is the financing and requirements that aren't necessary for the smaller I, you know, developments. And 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 get those things ironed out. I think if we're to do that and then definitions and such, that's too big of a chunk. I think we, I like what Evan said. I thought he hit the nail right on the head.
So one thing we could use direction on is there's the question of the definition itself. And then there's the secondary issue of whether or not the county should try to meet the city's standard, which is an occupancy standard and not an ownership standard, which would enable people who didn't meet the occupancy standard to still buy this house and rent it to somebody who met the occupancy standard. So that's the city standard. Ours is more strict. If that's something that you would be open to even entertaining, we can include that in our conversation. Otherwise, we won't input it in our conversation. And I would say, just based off input we've received so far in the public discussions on this, I I think there is significant public interest in seeing that at least be brought to the table to be considered.
I I disagree. Um, I'm sorry. I think we've got to broaden this up. I I we're just not looking at just financing. This thing has problems and we've got I mean, we need to tackle it, whether it's going to take more time or not, rather than postponing it. Uh, it's it needs all looked at. This is there's room for some improvement here.
I think it's going to take more than one workshop.
It's possible.
It's gonna, I think we're not going to be able to tackle it all in one workshop. It took us many, 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 many workshops to even get to this point. So I would like to you know, prioritize what we look at first. In two hours, it's going to be a, that goes by fast.
I would like to look at that. Please put it on there. Please put the information on there.
Well, I I guess I was going to try to agree with both Marion, but I mean, I I I do think we should, you know, within a reasonable amount of time, you know, to take a look at all the suggestions that have been made. Doesn't doesn't mean we're going to end up agreeing with them, but we should at least consider it. But it is a pretty big list and a lot of those issues become technical. And I think trying to tackle all of them in one workshop is a mistake and we should I try to prioritize which ones come in the first workshop and which ones we think of, you know, hopefully not too long after that. My two cents worth.
Yeah, I mean, but to to trust your question specifically, I I personally uh, really value the the ownership requirements. Um, it's hard for me to wrap my mind around why someone would want to own a property that they're not going to live in unless it was to make money. And I don't see this as, I don't see this as being an exchange that we're asking the community to to accept higher densities so that someone can make money off our labors trying to pay rent. And so for me, that's a sticking point and I I really appreciate the ownership clause.
So let me play back what I'm hearing and just make sure that I understand. So there's a lot to take on. Priority one is separating out this question of minor subdivisions versus larger subdivisions and the financial barriers that certain infrastructure requirements might place on those projects. So we can definitely make sure to make that a primary focus of our time in our next meeting. Then there are additional questions that time permitting, we can provide at least a summary of framing of what we've heard so far. And at your workshop, you can determine how far you want to go in either of those directions that we can take on. And that way we can keep the ball rolling and
Yes, that's
track this instead of waiting for the big giant package of perfection. Does that meet the general expectation of where you all sit?
Two hours goes by real fast.
Okay, so so to summarize, so missions having a, we're having a two hour workshop, which in which we will discuss a lot of these issues, but we're not going to have time to discuss all of them. And you know, the people planning that workshop will try to decide which ones we think we ought to be discussing first, which I'm, I think should be maybe the lower hanging fruit, but that's going to be a little bit less controversial. Um, because you know, it would be nice to make quick progress on some things. But we're not going to stop there and we will we will have an additional workshops not too far in the future to discuss the other issues. So.
And and I think Jacques and I talked about it being at two o'clock because that's tradition. But uh, tradition is, you know, we have had workshops that start earlier. You know, and maybe when with your uh, when you do your workshop or whatever, you know, your next planning commission, you might get a good sense of how much time we're going to really need to tackle even one or two of those issues.
You just, isn't the, aren't we doing the quarterly special events workshop two weeks later? Yes, so maybe it has to wait four weeks instead of two weeks.
Nine A M.
Or or break it into shorter. Okay, Chris, could you come to microphone?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out and use code amendment, it has to go through the planning commission before you can consider it. And so you know, from the standpoint of efficiency of process, it might be better to, you know, have joint workshops with the planning commission so that they can expedite getting it to public hearing. And then reserve the commission specific workshop and after they forward it on to you. Otherwise, I think you're just adding another workshop into the mix that's going to slow things down.
But I I guess I was thinking the purpose of our workshop would be partly to give direction to the planning commission saying, you know, here's here's the range of alternatives we want you to consider so that they don't waste time working out the details of something that's not going to get forward.
Suggested joint workshop. Just to expedite process. Because you likely have another workshop after they send it to you. Anyway. I just want to point out that it has to be approved by the planning commission before they're on before you can consider it. And so that's, you know, the point right, right? I was getting it through the planning commissions that you can consider it.
So maybe
until it comes.
So maybe a joint workshop planning commission workshop on the twenty-fourth. Well, I'm wondering with the special events, does uh, well, yeah, we would what would uh, does this trump the special events workshop? No?
So maybe the first step is having a joint planning county on the twenty-fourth. We could do that. I don't know. We we let them. Well, no, the twenty-fourth is the planning commission.
Okay.
One day so that and that we don't have a lot planned for that agenda because that's the week we're going to do our whole workshop for future land use map. So I was kind of keeping that agenda light and not having, but we can, but we, that's good because we can focus on this as maybe the only thing that we're really talking about.
Right, okay.
So I'm I'm going to suggest that we work out the details of scheduling outside of this meeting.
Sounds great.
Yeah, okay, tentative plan.
Okay.
A joint. Okay, yeah, we see workshop. Okay, sounds good. All right. Well, thank you for that direction. Should I move on with the rest of the?
Yeah, why don't you resume your quarterly, we were up to Q two, I think.
And it's April.
And I guess you need to share your screen. Yep.
Okay, so moving on, um.
Oh, oh, I I'm sorry. So I I was meaning to summarize. You asked a question like forty-five minutes ago about about these small subdivisions. And I and I think the sense is that, yes, we want the planning department to I just wanted to say it out loud, get head nods. Okay.
I don't know that is necessarily part and parcel with the H D H O conversation. I think they're really separate because they, this
Yeah, it affects
It applies to all of those. So um, and I don't know how quickly we could come up with the solutions um, to to help out with that concern. Um, I think the H H O will be the priority. And then um, we'll try to simultaneously be doing some research um, in terms of uh, the cost of the improvements for those minor subdivisions. So so just to wrap up, um, quarter two priorities, um, the final priority, we hope to at least initiate in Q two is the process to update the county's resource management plan, which is a state mandated mandated update. This plan provides goals, objectives and policies ultimately used to improve coordination between the federal government, state and counties to find common ground on a wide variety of topics like land access, renewable energy, critical minerals, utility corridors or pipelines and infrastructure. The Public Lands Policy Coordinating Office does have resources to assist us in this effort, so we'll be working with them to coordinate the update. The R M P does does include a water resource component, so it should tie in to the regional water utility resource plan that is currently being developed by our regional water service providers. Um, so that's kind of a, that's been added to the roadmap since maybe originally talked with the planning commission about our priorities and you know, if you have any thoughts or um, questions about that.
No, the only, I'll just make a comment. The conservation district stated that they should be a part of that process. So just kind of throw that out. Okay. Thank you.
I I guess my comment is in the past, the R M P has not proved to be super important and decision in the county. So I I know you've got a lot on your plate and I would hate to see you just put too much time into that.
Right. I know there's some, there is a deadline for some state mandated um, items to to be uh, incorporated into the resource management plan. And I think it's, it is June of this year. Um, I don't know how much of a kind of a leeway to have with that deadline, but I can look into it.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so quarter three tentative priorities would be to finalize the comprehensive land use code updates that we started in Q two. Hopefully wrap up the Thompson replat and begin uh, future land use map efforts out in Thompson and the surrounding area and continue to work on the resource management plan. And the really critical efforts um, would come in uh, adopting water wise policies as part of land use code updates as well as satisfying the state requirement for integrating a water use and preservation element into the general plan. Lastly, in quarter three and continuing on to Q four, we would like the commission's feedback on potential collaboration with rim to rim restoration to focus efforts on pack creek restoration and stabilization for public safety purposes to mitigate impacts of flood and reduce risks of fire. So this was just brought to us um, recently. We met with Cara from Rim to Rim and she informed us that the, they are working with the city right now. They have a contract to improve in rest restore Mill Creek for these same reasons. And um, so she was curious if the county would be interested in doing some kind of similar collaboration down the line. It might not even happen this year, but we would maybe even just get started by um, developing this public engagement platform on our Grand County connects website just to start getting um, feedback from, because that that whole corridor is all mainly private property. So one of the big challenges would be working with the private property owners and um, figuring out if if they would like assistance in some of the um, removal of invasive plants, for instance, or um, bank stabilization. So like the the first step that we kind of identified would just be creating a project page on Grand County connects to start gathering ideas and feedback from private property owners along that corridor. So any thoughts on that priority or?
You would say that would be the the first step before collaborating with Rim to Rim?
Well, yeah, we would be collaborating with them still to kind of get the content for that project beach and um, working on, she had some ideas for start to create a a map of G I S mapping. Um, to start identifying priority areas.
Yeah.
But then later down the line, it would be more about like actually pursuing funding in projects.
No, were you
Yeah, when when we're, are we talking about the pack creek portion of that there? And is that pack creek within Grand County or are we stretching into San?
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if you all think that's a good idea. Should we, should we put it off or?
Is it within budget?
It would, it would take some staff time. Actually, we have um, Noel or Vista is very interested in this topic and she's kind of wanting to take it on. It's she's been our Grand County connects czar. So she is really savvy with putting up these little project pages and getting public input on. So it would be something that probably would go be assigned to her just initially to get it started.
And then rim to rims costs would be covered by the property owners?
So that, no, so that would have to be something we would figure out. If you that, if you wanted to pursue a contract with Rim to Rim, just like Millap City is, I think that would be a future discussion. We really don't know what that would look like at this point. If there's no objection, I'll I'll keep it on as a tentative priority.
Yeah, you got a lot of things at the top of your priorities.
Yeah, I guess my main worry is is the prioritization. I mean, it seems like a worth pursuing, but um, other things might be even more worth pursuing. So you need to be careful not
Yeah, yeah, these things could could fall into twenty twenty-four for sure. And so, yeah, the Q four uh, priorities we've listed here um, to begin development of a regional climate action plan. We talked with uh, Lexi from the sustainability, um, her department at the city and uh, she's all on board. They're doing their sustainable action plan right now. Um, they're getting a consultant to finalize that. Um, but that's sustainability. So that has a lot to do with the, it encompasses everything, you know, from water um, and kind of waste management and all the, all the sustainability topics, including some climate action um, related initiatives. But the climate action plan would be more of a a regional um, effort and we would involve the city, of course, and they're on board with that idea. So that's another big one. It would probably be pushed later, but if it's something we can start to think about or assign to interested planning commission members, we do have a very active planning commission right now and they're always asking if they can take on things. So.
So I I, on that topic, I heard had a comment from a city council member that the city's planning might be wrapping up in quarter three or something. So
Further sustainability action.
Yes, and so it was curious. Yes, and so it was curious about the time if we were to start collaborating with them after they're already done, does that make sense or should it? Timing be changed?
I think it would be an ongoing communication between our department and, and like. You know, and their effort in making sure that we're engaged in their sustainability action plan and me, and figuring out, you know. Where a climate action plan, because it's a very specific initiative to pursue. Um, I think it would go beyond what the sustainability action plan is pursuing. We would just need to be involved and engaged in that process.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, and then we also have been approached uh by uh Maddie from the active transportation trails. Division to assist in updating the non-motorized trails master plan, which um spent about ten years, maybe a little more than. Uh, when that was first adopted, so they're looking, they have a very active board, she said that they are very uh motivated. Towards the end of the year in kind of in the winter months to start. Working on this and especially to start focusing more on the active transportation part of this plan, because the original plan really um. Kind of focused more on the trails out on public lands than around in, in surrounding areas, but this, she, she's um. Described their kind of uh priority of this plan to really pursue more of the active transportation. Element um here in, in, in value, so in the developed areas and connecting our neighborhoods with. So another big one, but we wouldn't, we would just be kind of a um, a support, would be a support role. Yeah. There's also dark skies version two, which we've kind of gone, gone back and forth on um. Working with the city and taking their lead on their update that they're doing and so that's kind of still. I- in the background and we'll try to pursue it as we can, but it's probably not the highest on the priority list. And that's it, that's all I have.
So further questions or comments for Lisa?
Good job.
I, yeah, good job. I, I, I have a few, actually. It was in them quickly, but um I, I think one, one thing you touched, I, I think was in your presentation that in addition to the future land use plan, we're. Also looking at updating the land use code in roughly the same timeframe and definitely support, supportive of that. Some, something that um. Comes up a lot is uh how, you know, the interface of planning and full build out with our limited water resources. And, you know, that's always tricky because we don't have perfect information about water. Um, but I just wonder if we could build into the, you know, the planning that we're doing in the short term. At least, you know, a kind of a placeholder saying that if, if we needed to suddenly conserve a lot more, you know, here, here are some additional. You know, measures we might take, direction just, you know, so that if we, if we two years from now say, you know. Realize that we need to change direction a bit, we, we've got a head start on that, so. Let's see, um. And, you know, something I wondered about is development um on, on South one ninety one, um. And that's like mo- where most of our commercial property is, it's, you know, just not an area that shows heavy signs of being planned. You know, currently, um, and I, I know it's a tough job, but I. Yeah, it, it seems to me like, you know, especially if we're thinking, you know, ten or fifteen or twenty years in the future, um. But putting some effort into that and maybe there are consultants, I mean, we're certainly not the only committee that has like a busy highway commercial districts, so we can. Try to see what other, other places have done, so.
In terms of the um future land use map and like.
Yeah, but there's kind of like a sub, you know, it's just on a little, I, I think a lot of the discussion that. I've heard about the future janice bad has, has more to do with housing, which, you know, I, I do think we should do soon, but.
Definitely a commercial aspect to.
Okay, okay, so maybe it's part of that, okay?
Yeah.
Um. And, yeah, I think that's it for my list.
Looking particularly at priorities, if there's anything that you would want to have additional workshop in or time on that we should start to schedule now. To keep things rolling, I just want to call it that would be particularly helpful, um. Think of water stuff is slated for Q three, but there's some early work, there's a subcommittee of tree planting commissioners who are focused on that, so.
It's true.
I just want to ask ahead of time, either now or in the next meeting, if you could give us direction on that type of time. Planning, that would be helpful going into the summer months.
Okay, I, I, I think one of the big items, you know, no, no surprise is, is housing and in particular higher density housing, where, where it should be located. What the terms are, you know, is it going to be, you know, some. Are we going to create HDHO version two? And, and if so, what does that look like? Are we going to have overlay zones or use some other tools? So all, all that stuff, it's be great to have that all through.
And there's public outreach involved in the future land use planning efforts, so that will be, I imagine we're, we're going to have the most public input.
Anyone else?
I'll, I'll speak real quick to the commercial that Kevin was talking about, I've been in a couple of meetings with you, Dot. I, I think when we start changing our map, we really need to be participating with the, the state. They, they have plans out there also for frontage roads and moving on and. Bringing in those land property owners as well, some of, there's some pretty big property owners along Highway one ninety one, they all need to be involved in this.
Hey, anything else? Thanks, thanks, Lisa. And hello, Larry. It's pretty, and a camouflage, well, not quite camouflage.
Uh, you know, and there's a Jeep party, Larry's gonna show up.
Okay, so we're at our uh last agenda item and that is a discussion about special events and um. There's nothing in the packet, but I think Mike wanted that on there, so why don't you read off?
Can I read from here? Okay, I can go down and present. As you all know, I'm very passionate about special events. My. Home life or my actual job is very dependent on our tourism industry. Um, I identified that there's about three points uh with our current. Special events ordinance that I'd like to talk about to, uh today. We have, I'm just gonna go into uh. Our special events advisory committee uh seems to be just a switchboard uh for our commission. Uh, they, a lot of our events are high impact and the special events committee has no discretion. On those facts, if it's two hundred and forty nine people, it would be considered, it, two hundred and fifty is the metric. Uh, on the amount of people, uh if we had two hundred and forty nine, it could, would be considered a low impact event, but if we had two hundred and fifty one. It would be considered a high impact event and the special events committee would have no discretion on that, it would be simply pitched to the. Uh, commission, uh as we know, our, our packets are already quite large. Uh, in the sense, in the sense that the special events advisory committee. Could be doing more work, uh not in the sense of uh preparing packets or anything or the compliance set, but uh. More discretion in their ability, or in our ability to say yea or nay. From the uh special events advisory uh committee point. Um, another point is we have no way, uh. We have no way within time constraints, if an event applies uh six months to a, within, within a year to six months, a high impact event. Uh, applies, uh and then three months out from the event time cancels uh the event, we have no way. Uh, we would, would be very hard for an event to try to. Well, they couldn't under our current guidelines because they were not six months out uh prior to the event. They couldn't even apply for the event timeline or time space on our calendar uh to fill that void, uh we can't. I'm all for, for, for following policy uh when it comes to that, uh and following the guidelines, uh if. But I'd rather not have open blocks uh during, during the months as. Uh, my, my income's heavily based off of uh the guests that we do bring to town. I know that uh I'm not speaking alone, that the business community has uh reached out. And has spoken to me about this fact that we can't, we can't fill those holes when they're created, we, we don't have. They have enough time to put an event together, but they don't have the ability to apply six months uh out at the point of cancellation, so. That's another point that I wanted to uh look at or, uh, I mean, talk with. Um, uh my third point with it is. Third, uh third point is going to be. Osta is an event facility of our own, uh it's Grant County's. Uh, if, if we look towards letting. Osta follow its uh own scheduling and guideline or. Letting it be fiscally responsible for itself, uh. I'm, I'm not saying that, a- as we all know, Grand County facilities don't have to make money for Grand County, but it would be. More pertinent to let them do their own scheduling, own events, et cetera, to keep that within. I mean, not just a, a giant hole for money, uh which it, it currently is, uh it's quite, uh it's quite costly. Uh, I would look towards Osta to make their, it's an event facility. It is not a special event facility, it literally is an event facility that Grant County built. Uh, it should be able to host its, uh host events, host uh. Within, it should be able to host events on its own, it should be, it would still have to follow a set of guidelines, but. I think a lot of self-promotion and uh self fiscal responsibility is, should be put on Ostate itself. Those are my three main points. If anyone has. This is the discussion, this is not an action, I.
I have a question for you, Kevin, I know uh most of these special events involve being on BLM plant. And there is a, I know, a time that, you know, in advance that they have to apply. Do you know what that time period is?
Sorry, not, not off the top of my head.
Because I know that one.
Mallory, do you know?
They were too.
What, but, but can't we, the, the thought process behind that, as I understand that that style of event. Or, or using a BLM land event can't fill that? But what about a three hundred person rodeo would want to fill that, that time slot during that, if the event space was open? That was my, it's not the type of the event. Yes, we lost or. Yes, an event promoter doesn't want to hold their event here three months out, that's fine. That's the prerogative, actually, uh but. It's hard for two, three hundred person uh runs to come in at that same time to fill that void. If, if a Jeep event quits, then two, two run races want to take up that, you know, that week or that week's timeline, we, we can't do that, right?
Yes.
Um, so I know we've talked about this a lot and there's a few things that if you all are okay with it, I'd like to share that maybe we can look at. Modifying, but a challenge I see with the, the timelines. The turnaround is just the importance of making sure that our emergency responders have that ability to see stuff. Um, and plan and know like, oh, no, we only have two ambulances available. Like, so, so they want to proceed, like, this is a pretty. Be bad thing for us, or we know that we'll need to staff more people and maybe somebody could buy some ambulance. Okay, um, but I do think. You just say you buy one?
No, I said we'll take it.
We've got, we've got the money, we can't find them, so.
So you can't find them, you can't find any of them.
Sorry.
No, so I think that that's a big, big challenge with all of this, but I do think that there's places that it can be. Changed and tweaked. I think we were talking there, I was talking to Glenn yesterday and looking at the old ordinances. And since twenty nineteen, I think we've had seven changes and so I think looking at those. Minor tweaks and places that could be flexible, um but keeping kind of the game the same. And just letting people know like what is to come, because talking to folks, that's what I felt. One big issue is, so it's like, well, last year, yeah, we had to go through this terrible process. And we got through it, but this year we have to go through the terrible process, but now this has changed, okay, the fees are less this year. But we increased our fees because they were so much more last year, they just want to know. So what I think would be a good balance would be for us to look at. Like, I could even work on some changes in an ordinance that wouldn't overhaul things and change like the philosophy. Uh, and what is defined as a special event, but maybe even something of. I, I don't know if it would be the commission or, you know, the mission administrator's office and county attorney. Can at their discretion, case by case, say like this document, yeah, you can get that a week late. Like, that's okay, just some flexibility, staying within the framework and then reevaluating. I'm sorry, I took that out.
I mean, I don't, I don't think we want to lose the, you know, we've, we've done a lot of work on this, a lot, a lot before you came on. So I want to state that, and, you know, the big picture, at least in my mind, was that we had events come. To us quarterly so that we could have a picture of what, you know, that balance was going to look like. Motorized versus non-motorized running, and so, you know, if we start throwing that out the window, we're back to where we started. Where it's just a, I'm just, let me just finish, just a hodgepodge, and the other issue that we had coming to us is. We were getting events, literally one that I remember, the event was happening that weekend, it was Tuesday, it was happening that weekend. How were we going to, you know, not authorize that event, you know, people were literally traveling. So we don't want to get pushed back into those corners where we have to approve events that didn't really fit the schedule, the overall schedule. Or didn't really fit, you know, what we were looking for as far as diversity, so there, there, we've put pieces in place. I understand we might have to do small tweaks, but I don't want to start dismantling where, where we're at, and to be honest, like, kind of speaking to a couple other things. If you don't, if you feel like the advisory committee isn't. Working, then all events come to the commission, that's the way I would see it, honestly, not the other way around, that's actually the way I would go is. Every event comes to the county commission and period, I mean, I wouldn't go the other way, I'm, uh, that's the way I would lean is. Fine, then every single event comes to the county commission, and then the last thing I'll state since I'm on it, um, um. We, we have to understand that Osta is a facility, but that those events, those impacts are felt. You know, countywide or a couple counties, San Juan County too, so. They, they affect a larger than just Osta, and so to me, it's. We, we have to oversee the events that go, that are housed at OSA also, that's my opinion. So they're just. And I'll, then I'll keep my mouth shut, I just.
You guys go, I'll.
So the special event committee has, we have seven members and I'm, I'm on this special event committee. One of the things that I noticed, number one, I would remove the county attorney from the special event committee as a voting member. And, and I've said that beforehand, and here's the reason, here's the reason why, there's four criteria that we need to look at when an event comes forward to deem high or low. There's no discretion, it's either two hundred and fifty people, if it triggers that, it's high, automatically comes to you guys regardless. If it's fifty motorized vehicle. If it's fifty motorized vehicle, fi- fifty motorized vehicles or more, it's high, comes to you guys. If it has impacts or closures on roadways, it's high, comes to you guys, and if it's, I think, medical, there's another one that that has some other. Really, if it's more than the normal use, then it's also high comes to you guys. What we have right now is we have seven people that have to vote whether it's high or low. And if any one person votes as high, it automatically all comes to you guys anyways, so without any discretion. Really, we literally have to read and go, huh, okay, there's a thousand people going to this event, we all have to vote on it. So that kind of doesn't make sense, it should just, thousand people goes to you guys automatically. That's that's one critique, and the alternative would be, well, do you guys want discretion if there's two hundred and fifty one people? Do you want them to say, meh, to have discretion? So if if the commission decides that question, all of the things that I see are procedural, not changing the end goal. And instead, so I'd remove the county attorney from a voting member, um in our, yes, in our discussion, we talked with other members. And we talked with August Granath, Andy Boytek, and they also kind of questioned whether they would want to be on on the commission as well, on that committee as well. Um and and they also kind of thought, well. We we have a whole breakdown, and I wish I had the spreadsheet that Mallory made up, the roadmap, that walked us through the whole process. At the end, we have referral agencies, like the county attorney and like the clerk, we should be in that later section. That's why we shouldn't be on the committee to begin, so my my suggestion was remove the county attorney from from voting. Either have the voting be triggered automatically, because on some of those, like I said, if it's a thousand people, then we literally have to wait for seven people to vote, is this more than that number or not? And all our commissioners or all our committee members are great at uh that level of math, and so we're all set that way, but it's just kind of a waste of time. For for a lot of us, we have meetings and and that's kind of my gripe is that it's seven people, your clerk auditor, August, Angie Book, Mallory, Gwen, myself. Oh, just one of you guys, but it's a lot of people, a lot of high resources from the county dedicated to this, that so that was my concern, and then, I don't know what Mike's second, what was your second? Deal, my my note died.
Cancellations.
Oh, cancel, yeah.
Cancel the events.
Well, yeah, and and that was, that was really it, on my my two cents.
Steven's gonna wanna hit me, it's fine, uh but I think. I would support everything going to the commission, I think the challenge there, yeah, being kind of it, is that that is actually going to make it harder for some event holders. With deadlines, especially the smaller ones, uh but I I welcome that. Say that doesn't happen, I do think it would be fair to look at the membership on the committee and remove a few people. Uh however, I think the county attorney's office is very important because that's who we need to be, to check on, okay, is this a land use thing? Does it hit on this ordinance? And I'm, I can do that, I'm fine with doing that, but.
Not to remove the county attorney's review of it, but to put it later in the process, like we talked about Gabe. Gabe, for example, signs off on the event permit at the end of the day, so having him as a voting member doesn't make as much sense because he's ultimately gonna review uh your certi-. Certificate, certificates of insurance and a county attorney is gonna be required to review it anyways, but the difference is voting on whether it's a high impact event, a low impact event, and so that, so that's, that's. Um and why it should be removed.
Okay.
I feel like we're in high school debate begging you guys to let us out of the church.
Okay, so we.
Yeah, I'm, I support some of what Mike's talking about for sure, we need to find ways to fill in some of those slots, I. I agree if we lose one event, great, maybe Moab has a free weekend, if you wanna look at it that way and there's less pressure. But if we lose a half a dozen of them, we're, we have a staff out there for a reason and we have these, the place for those events to happen for a reason and. Also, you know, I know that you spent a lot of time on this, but there was a lot of time spent on the HDHO as well, and it isn't perfected yet any more than this is. And I don't wanna gut this, that's not, wouldn't be my goal, but do I wanna fine tune it, yes, because there are little nuances all throughout it that there's room for it. And also, there's somewhat of a different voice on the commission now, and whether. It it isn't about doing away with what the past commission put together, but it's also listening to another voice that's now in the room, so to speak.
No, I think one thing that the last ordinance actually tried to do was to go a- away from this. Is it this type of a event, okay, well now you have to hit this, this and this and go to that, we wanna have, you know, a consideration, and I say we. Of you, of what is the like mitigation efforts, it shouldn't just be, okay, you can't have this event because you're this type, or it's, you know. Focused around this, uh so I I that's where I think tweaking it and giving it a little time, but.
And I don't wanna see every event in front of the commission, I I disagree with that, I I think that's.
I didn't say that's what I wanna do, I didn't think, the choice is like, oh, like just, we don't have any discretion, I I wouldn't do that. So I think it's very important that we do, it's a safe and certain event.
Well, Evan, Evan, wait.
I I signaled the chair. Okay, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, you know, to Tricia's point, the reason that a lot of this got reworked was because we were getting tons of feedback from the public about special events. And our answer was like, that's not us, it's being approved by other people that, you know, serve under us, but it was ultimately. We were the ones getting all the emails and having to respond and explain to events that had been approved with or without our blessings. And so that's kind of what led to the rework, we haven't sat with the rework that long, I'd I'd like to see that kind of go more than one quarter. Um, I think people bailing is uh, you know, just kind of part of the growing pains. Also, when we were looking at redoing this, um, there wasn't much evidence that events created more business downtown. It it was really found that town was busy every weekend of the year, regardless of whether there was big events or little events or anything. So I think the idea of like trying to push uh events as driving business is uh, is not really something that. That holds a lot of water, and so it's more kind of like about the the cultural sort of milieu of being in a fun place. And to your point of of trying to have Osta be a moneymaker, we had a. A strange opportunity not too long ago to rent it out, and regardless of if that's the purpose of Osta or not, there was an opportunity for Osta to make money. And when we looked to pursue it, the feedback we got was that they were very busy and their calendar was very full, and there was no way that they could handle any more activity out there. And so that's not really the message that we're getting from Osta, um in the sense that like, oh, it's just empty and we need to fill it, like. The stories that we get is that it's very busy, it's serving the community, which which I feel is the the point of it. And um I don't wanna displace those regular activities, you know, to to entertain tourists out there. And so I I think it's it's good where we are, I I, you know, maybe the processes of who's sitting on the board could have some some small tweaks, but. You know, trying to drive more big uh events or scramble to approve things last minute when there's a cancellation. I th- I think that that's just gonna add more headache to, on a lot of different fronts.
So. Sorry. Mike, Mike will talk after.
Yeah, no, don't worry, don't worry.
First, I I, you know, I agree with a lot, many of the comments that were made, so that's gonna, means I don't have to talk as long right now. Um, for your complaints and your crazy attempt to get off that committee, shame on you. Yeah, no, I I I total, that makes total sense, deciding whether one thousand is bigger than two fifty, that should not be a seven person. Decision and 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 I do agree that determining whether an event is high or low, that's a very, you know, should be an easy administrative decision, so my recommendation is just. One person makes that decision and just circulates it to other people, and if they object, they say so, but otherwise, you know, someone.
Come about a bounce.
About, okay, anyway, I I just wonder if there's tweaks there, but but certainly. And 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 so I I guess more generally, I think a few people have stated, um, and maybe everyone has said that, you know, we're not looking to totally overhaul this, we're looking at fine tuning or. Getting some rough edges, and I I agree that, you know, both because the commission's different this year and because, you know, we get things perfect the first try, and we should be. Open to that, I, but I do think there's some, some big structural aspects of the event that that I like, that, you know, we put there for a reason and I would support keeping. You know, one is the quarterly review, um I think previously we were. Proving events, it's like one at a time, it's some random schedule based on whenever someone happened to apply, and it would never, I think something that's really important is the big picture, like. You know, how, what does April look like, do we have like a gigantic event every single weekend, is is that what we want, or do we just want two or three out of four weekends? And to make that, those decisions, you have to look at the whole quarter at a time. Another aspect of that is um. Events come, events that we know we're gonna approve still come to the commission, not because we think we might say no, but just because we want them on the sheet of paper and. See how they fit in the big picture, so for example, we have Jeep Safari this week, and we're we're always going to approve Jeep Safari, you know, that's not gonna get turned, unless there's a pandemic.
So depending, it can.
Yeah, I I wasn't on the commission, that's. But still, it's important that it be on the dock with other things, I I do think, you know, when we've got these sort of legacy events that have been running for a long time. I think it's appropriate for the county to try to smooth the transition to the new system, whereas if we have a brand new applicant, I think they should just obey the rules, not that hard. So, um so that that's some aspects that I that I do wanna keep. Um, going through Mike's um points, uh maybe in reverse order, you talked about, you know, Osta being different and streamlined some things there and. And I, yeah, I, you know, most events, especially events that are like a rodeo, that's a pure Osta event as opposed to say. Jeep Safari, which is technically an Osta event, but it has impacts much beyond. And so I I think if there's a way to make it easier to have an event that's purely Osta, that's not two thousand people, it's more like three hundred or, you know. I'm I'm open to things like that, and and I think you, I think you talked about cancellations, you didn't say Osta, but it sounded like that's what you were thinking when you were worried about canc- cancellations.
Uh, a lot of the current uh cancellations are physically at Osta facilities.
Okay, and and I I guess we could consider, I mean, part of the reason for having the quarterly review is to space events out and not have too much crowding, so if an event. Cancels, that does leave a hole in the calendar, and so, you know, we might consider, you know, maybe under cer- circumstances, we could do that, I I'd be more. Sympathetic to it if it were just, again, pure Osta events as opposed to just random things. Um, and then the, I'm not trying to, you know, you were making the point that the um special committee had no discretion, and maybe it's the same as Stephen was saying, it's silly to have seven people.
World in the same, I I'm part of committee, we're.
Yeah, and so maybe, you know, the things where it doesn't, I I totally agree with s- suggestions similar to what Stephen was saying, but, you know, such that Mallory would still like them. You know, whatever, whatever those two agree on, actually. Um, so. Yeah, so I I'll stop there.
Yeah, and thank you for all, but thank you for the discussion, uh that's what I I needed. Strong pull kind of thing. I do unders- I would not not like, uh this is not my attempt to gut this, I I want what we need in a kind of, an ordinance, uh. A special events ordinance, I I completely agree, hey, I'm very specific tweets, uh I mean, but not getting the whole thing. But not to speak badly upon it. Osta was busy, I'll I'll speak for Angie, uh Osta was busy, uh and now they're not because those events are onsite and canceling there. So now, looking back. If we had that open time, it could bring in a big person to rent it out, yes, we would want, you know, a short term decision. Not a a yearly plan or try to plan it out a year out. It wasn't free up at that time, and I would rather a more localized events take precedence over, I think it was the movie company. Uh that was trying to rent the whole facility. Uh I would want uh local discretion on that one. Uh but if we. I know events aren't all the money coming to town. But you can talk to any business owner and any worker, if we didn't have Jeep Safari right now, you you'd lose a sizable amount of your yearly income. We're up to the level of losing larger legacy events. That's going to seriously, I I trying to think long ball here, we're up to losing not six small events, we're up to losing large. Large events that do change the economy, uh the effect of the the. The amount of people that come to town, where it's it's large numbers, it's not small numbers. And I think that is. Not to speak against your point fully, but that, there are, there are several events that literally made Moab, Jeep Safari is one of them. For fifty two years, it's been going. I mean, that's a, that changes the economy of the area, if that event stepped, just using it as a as a talking point, if that event stepped out, it would change the. It would change the local economy by itself. I mean, we would have to fill that void or try to, but. It was not, my intentions with this discussion was not to get the uh got the ordinance as well.
I mean, I think it's great if you guys wanna, you know, look at small tweaks and to tweak the ordinance slightly, that's great, but but I just wanna, you know, want, you know, just remember like. A lot of work went into, you know, putting that together and then the overall reasons why, you know, we want diversity, we wanna spread things out, we, you know, we wanna be it. Be able to get these events to us in a timely manner that we can make, you know, decisions that are well thought out, not we got shoved into a corner and it's shoved down our throat, so. That's, you know, the, I think those are the, at least to me, the overall reasons that we put that much work into reworking that special events ordinance.
No, I I, sorry.
Um, no, I'm.
I was going to say that we're having a special, we're having a workshop next week uh to discuss this, so I'd like to draw this uh discussion to a close at seven thirty.
Okay, I I guess I I was about to say, so it's it sounds like there there is, you know, wide agreement that we should at least consider some tweaks. To the event, maybe we, you know, Mallory could coordinate what those are and in some future meeting, consider some streamlining.
Yes.
Thank you.
I like your style, Mary. It's time to draw.
Yeah, Mary clearly thinks, Dawn has anyone else who are ready, I see smiles. Except for, okay, okay, well, that that was our last agenda item, so um the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you so much, good job, Kevin.